You turn the mics, there we go, test one, two.
There we go. All right, I would like to welcome Rabbi Hershey Mikowitz with Chabad of North Fulton, who will lead us in tonight.
Thank you. Today, we're going to have a rather unique Star Tower invocation, probably something universal here in the city of Milton. This here is a shofar, this is a ram's horn, and the reason why I brought it along with me today with your indulgence is that next weekend, in exactly one week, this type of ram's horn is going to be sounded in synagogues around the world as the Jewish community ushers in the Jewish New Year with all its traditions and customs. One of those traditions is the sounding of this shofar, this ram's horn, which is intended to act as a symbolic alarm clock to wake us up from our slumber, not a physical slumber, but rather the sleep of our spirit and soul. From time to time, we need something that wakes us up and reminds us to refocus and re-center on what is really important in life, and in many ways, that is even why we have an invocation. It's intended, before we start an evening of discussing mundane earthly matters and business, to remember that there's a higher force and energy in the universe that allows for everything to happen and for our efforts to be successful. And so, let us pray. Oh Father in heaven, as we are about to launch into an evening of discussion and possibly debate about matters of community and material life, please give us the ability to remain focused and centered on the things that matter most. Please reinvigorate our spirit and keep our souls awake so that we have the mindset and perspective that is most conducive to us carrying out the mission of the city, which reads that we take pride in our responsibility to protect and improve the high quality of life for those we serve. Bless the city and its elected leaders with the energy and resolve to remain committed to that goal of improving the quality of life for all its citizens. We are committed to doing our part, and we pray that you do yours in ways that manifest and reveal good for all. May each and every one of our citizens be blessed with good health, happiness, prosperity, and peace, and may we live together as a strong and united community forever. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Wednesday, September 6, 2023, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, then please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will City Clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'd be happy to call roll for the September 6, 2023 regular council meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. All speakers will identify themselves with name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a public comment, please bring your comment cards to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Andrea Verhoff.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Juliette Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Jacobus.
Yep.
And Councilmember Rick Morg.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is approval of the meeting agenda. I have a couple additions. I would like to add a new business agenda item, number 23-243A, to the agenda to immediately following the consent agenda. The agenda item to be added is the approval of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee by appointing a board member for District Two, Post Two, and I have to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition, personnel, and potential litigation. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept the amended agenda as requested by you.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Verhoff to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next is general public comment. Do you have any general public comment?
We do, Mayor.
Okay. The next item is general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. The city encourages you to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak, to bring your comment cards to the city clerk right now. If the city clerk will please call the first speaker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Mr. Gary Jablonsky to the podium, please.
I'm Gary Jablonsky, 2680 Grassview Drive. I want to congratulate the city on opening up Fire Station Number 42. We've been without it for quite some time. I live in that area, so I'm very happy that it's open. However, in my opinion, I think it's opened two years too late because the city didn't manage the project very well. But I'm happy it's open now, and I don't think there's been really any huge negative impact while it was closed. I'm happy it's open, and I would have hoped that it was a nice two-story building, but I think the firemen will be happy with what they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Mayor, that concludes general public comment.
Okay, so I will close public comment, and we'll move on to consent agenda. Will City Clerk please say on the items?
Mayor, that first item is approval of the August 21, 2023 regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 23-230. B is approval of the financial statements and investment report for period 10, July 2023, Agenda Item Number 23-231. Item C is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and R&amp;B Developer, Inc., for the expansion of the City Hall parking lot, Agenda Item Number 23-232. D is approval of a resolution to amend a previous petition for condemnation of property rights needed for Morris Road widening project, Parcel 10. Square, bear with me, 10, 0.034 acres of fee sample right-of-way, 23,918.8 square feet of temporary construction easement, temporary easement for restoration of detention pond, and installation of culvert, and one driveway easement. The owner is Morris Lake Townhome Association, Inc., this is Agenda Item Number 23-233. E is approval of amended memorandum of understanding between the City of Milton and the National Charity League, Inc., to provide volunteer support at city outreach events and initiatives, Agenda Item Number 23-234. Next is approval of the TASER Energy Weapon Agreement with Amendment Number One between the City of Milton and Axon Enterprise, Inc. It's an Agenda Item Number 23-235. G is approval of a professional services agreement between Focal Forensics, LLC and the City of Milton for the purpose of outsourcing certain video redaction requests for body camera and in-car footage requested through Georgia Open Records Act, Agenda Item Number 23-236. H is approval of change order number one to the contract with 10-8 LLC to provide for the installation of budgeted items prior to delivery, Agenda Item Number 23-237. I is approval of an amendment to the services agreement between the City of Milton and invoice cloud for price and service fee changes, Agenda Item Number 23-238. J is approval of subdivision plats and revisions. The name of the development is the Homestead of Milton at 15135 Hopewell Road. Its land lot 543 through 547, 606 through 609, and 617 through 618. It's District Two, Section Two. It's a revision number two to the minor plat, and that minor plat supersedes the minor subdivision plat recorded in Plat Book 452, pages 128 through 142. The purpose of the revision is to reconfigure the common area of the front entrance at 15135 Hopewell Road, to remove addresses not assigned to specific parcels, change address for Lot Number 30, eliminate references to lots 31 and 32, add biopond as built data, and add biopond easements, a total of 1.6, I'm sorry, a total of 166.29 acres with a density of 0.180 lots per acre. It is Agenda Item Number 23-239. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Johnson to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the added new business agenda item. Will City Clerk please say on the item?
Mayor, that item is approval of a resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee by appointing a board member for District Two, Post Two. It's Agenda Item Number 23-243A. Mayor?
Okay, I will turn it over to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the gentleman I'm referring to this evening is not able to join his Seattle meeting that ran late, but he looks forward to being sworn in at the earliest possible meeting, provided you move forward with the approval this evening. So it's my pleasure to introduce Greg Tinker. It is my request of council to approve Greg as the newest member of the Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee. Greg and his wife have enjoyed living in Milton for over two decades. They have raised two children here, a daughter who is actively involved in the cheerleading squad at Cambridge High School, and a son who attends Hopewell Middle School and is a member of the local Georgia Jackets Travel baseball team. The family's active lifestyle extends to their passion for local sports and nature. Regular attendees of Braves games and high school football games, they embody the spirit of community engagement. They also enjoy water sports at Lake Lanier and making the most of the beautiful surroundings offered here. Greg's community involvement reaches further into volunteering with the Hopewell Youth Association. His dedication to giving back and enriching our community is truly commendable. Professionally, Greg has built a successful company originally founded in Milton. Company's evolution and growth, including a headquarters move following mergers and acquisitions showcase Greg's effective leadership and a personal skills and strategic vision. I've thoroughly assessed Greg's interest in this committee and his desire to contribute to Milton's future by giving him time and energy, or giving of his time and energy to this important committee. With this background and interest in the success of Milton, I put forward Greg Tinker for your consideration and approval to join our Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Any discussion? And if not, I'll open it for a motion.
I'll take.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Greg Tinker for District Two, Post Two Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Verhoff to approve Agenda Item Number 23-243A. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous, and I will swear in Mr. Tinker at a future date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Will the City Clerk please say on the items?
Mayor, that first item is a proclamation recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Mayor?
Thank you. This is an important proclamation. I believe everyone in this, everyone here in the building has known someone. It's actually, it's actually more common nowadays for childhood cancer, and I think it's appropriate that we read this proclamation for the awareness of everyone that has been affected by childhood cancer. And this is whereas children from all around the world, including Milton, battle cancer with 47 new ones diagnosed daily around the United States. And whereas young people with this disease often require intensive and expensive treatments that can stretch over months and years, and can also benefit from all types of other support for them and their families. And whereas Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is recognized in September nationwide to increase awareness about childhood cancer, the need for more funding and research, and how to keep affected families. And whereas one goal is to do what we can to allow children to beat cancer, while understanding that the physical and psychological impacts of this fight can remain for many years thereafter. And whereas another is to acknowledge those children who succumb to cancer, the families who struggle with that horrific loss, and those who work to make a difference even after such a tragedy. And whereas, the latter group includes the family of Metro Atlanta resident Millie Muricek, who passed away at three and a half years old, and whose family then launched the Mighty Millie Foundation to continue funding research as well as spreading joy and awareness for families fighting childhood cancer. And whereas, the City of Milton wants to reassure the many children and families in Milton and beyond that they are not alone in this struggle and that they have the support of our entire community. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton proclaim September to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Milton, and we encourage residents to be both aware and supportive of those families engaged in this battle, and that's given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on the sixth day of September of 2023. And at this point, I will ask anyone who's been affected by, you know, childhood cancer to come up and we'll take a picture and do this proclamation.
Hi, welcome. Mayor. Give one, you can let.
Yeah.
Let me hand this. Mayor, 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 were you?
Okay, are you ready? Up here, three, two, one, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for your loss.
Will the City Clerk please say on the next item?
Mayor, the next item is a proclamation recognizing September as Milton Wellness Month and Suicide Prevention Week. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. This is another proclamation that is all too familiar to people sitting in these council chambers. You know, suicide and mental wellness is more and more common, and I believe this is something we can continue to recognize, this Suicide Prevention Week, and I know they have a foundation here, the LRJ Foundation in the back, and they've been very active in our community, and they do wonderful work, and we're here to support you. So I'll read this proclamation. This is whereas depression, anxiety, PTSD, and other mental health issues afflict people of all ages, of all types, and in all places, including Milton. Whereas, a U.S. Surgeon General earlier this year declared an epidemic of loneliness and isolation, reflecting how a lack of connections is a growing issue that can have lasting damaging impacts. And whereas, the City of Milton recognizes the importance of shining a light on such common mental health realities by boosting public awareness as well as sharing ways that people can address them. Whereas, September has become Mental Wellness Month in the City of Milton, marked by engaging social media in a September 7 webinar in partnership with the mental health-focused nonprofit LRJ Foundation. And whereas, this is our opportunity, too, to highlight World Suicide Prevention Day this year on September 10th, and National Suicide Prevention Week from September 10th through September 16th. And whereas, according to the CDC, suicide is a top 10 cause of death in America and the second-leading cause among those ages 10 to 34, accounting for about 20% of deaths for those between 10 and 24 years old. Whereas, candid dialogues and sharing information can help prevent suicide by reducing stigmas and letting people know they're not alone. Whereas, we are stronger as a community when difficult topics like suicide is discussed head-on, when we listen to each other and forge connections, when resources are available, and when support is readily available. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the City of Milton proclaim September 10th through 16th to be Suicide Prevention Week in Milton, and we demonstrate the city's commitment to our citizens' health and well-being by working with the LRJ Foundation on an educational campaign throughout September, sharing information, tools, and resources with our community to support mental wellness, and this is given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on the sixth day of September 2023. So if the LRJ Foundation will come up, or really anybody who's been affected by suicide, if you could come up and we'll give you a proclamation.
Well, yeah, Mayor, you're good. So Teresa, just pick one side of them. Let's see. You're good, they should see. Yeah, yeah, that's good. Back up. Yep. Yeah, you're good, you're good. Yeah, you're good to stay on that side. Perfect. Just look up here. In three, three, two, one. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the first presentation. Will the City Clerk please say on the items?
Mayor, that first item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2023 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue appropriations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 23-240. B is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia to adopt the fiscal 2024 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the several items of revenue appropriations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda Item Number 23-241. Mayor Jameson?
Thank you. Council, do you have a motion on the first presentation?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the first presentation as read. Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilor Moore and a second from Councilor Moore to approve the first presentation items as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, uh, if the city clerk will please call the next item.
Mayor, that next item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2023 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue appropriations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. It's agenda item number 23240. For the public hearing, Ms. Our Deputy City Manager, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we are here to discuss the second round of proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2023 budget. The budget for this fiscal year was approved on September 19th, 2022, and initial amendments were approved on May 15th, 2023. The amendment packet before you represents adjustments that will amend line items to carry out projections through the end of the fiscal year on September 30th, 2023. Before you is the general fund budget summary, or will be before you in a moment. Wait for it to come up on the screen. You will see the amended revenues for fiscal year 2023 at $42.5 million. This includes a transfer in from the ARPA fund in the amount of $1 million associated with the market adjustment to salaries authorized in fiscal year 2023, which are eligible to be covered by this program. Those funds were reallocated to the purchase of a stock fire engine and equipment as part of the latter tender concept deployment that Fire Chief Ben Musa presented and was approved by council in early July of this year. In this request, you will see an overall increase of $1,079,379 in projected revenues being proposed, and we will go over some of those details in just a moment. Moving down to the expenditure summary, you will see the current fiscal year 2023 budget at $30.5 million for continuing operations and $42.9 million when taking operating transfers out to other funds into consideration. The proposed amendment in the amount of $2,405,860 will result in an overall expenditure budget of $45.3 million. Ninety-four percent of this $2.4 million request is associated with a transfer out to the Capital Projects Fund to support the city's pay-as-you-go capital improvement plan. We will go over the details of this transfer later on in the presentation as well. If these amendments are approved as presented, the projected general fund fund balance will be $10,930,376, which puts the city in line with the fund balance requirement of twenty-five percent of the subsequent year's revenues. Any revenues which exceed this forecast and expenditures which come in under these projections will be taken into consideration for one-time projects in the budget amendment process in fiscal year 2024. At this time, we will go over the more significant changes to the anticipated revenues for fiscal year 2023. There is a request to increase local option sales tax anticipations by $423,168 due to revenues coming in higher than were forecasted during the negotiation process. Corresponding updates have been made to the five-year plan and will be seen later this evening in the proposed budget forecast for fiscal year 2024. There is also a request to increase revenues related to business and occupation taxes in the amount of $150,000, um, which reflects collections to date. We will touch on this a little more in detail in just a moment as part of our public hearing requirement for those revenues. We spoke about the $1 million amendment for the transfer in from the ARPA fund. That's the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, as you will see. We also have a $103,479 request coming in from the Operating Grant Fund to reimburse the fund for grant-related expenses booked in fiscal year 22, and a reduction in the transfers in from the Impact Fees Fund for admin and law enforcement as impact fee revenues haven't been coming in lower than anticipated this fiscal year. As I mentioned, the occupational tax revenues, when they come in any time a government's current year occupational tax collections exceed the previous year's collections, we must include a conversation of how to utilize these funds in a public hearing. So we're here this evening to do so. In the proposed amendment, staff have included these additional revenues in the transfer out to the Capital Projects Fund to support the city's pay-as-you-go funding of one-time projects. And this includes the highlights of our revenue amendments this evening. I will pause to see if anyone has any questions before proceeding on to the general fund expenditures. The initial request you see here pertains to the funding required for House Bill 704 passed by the state, which addresses the annual salary for mayor and council. These legislative changes have also been carried through the updated five-year forecast that will be seen later this evening. In the City Clerk Department, there is a request to increase the employee benefits category to true-up the budget to actual expenses incurred. Throughout the amendments, you will see certain departments having a similar amendment request associated with employee benefits category. As you may recall, Milton budgets for an anticipated average cost per employee and does an end-of-year true-up to account for actual costs across departments. Overall, benefit expenses are projected to come in lower than anticipated across the city in fiscal year 2023, so none of these entries are indicative of the need for additional funding in any way. Please note, the city has included the newly-created Elections Department in fiscal year 2023 as the city has taken on the role of running its own municipal elections. Previously, expenses associated with the election costs were accounted for in the City Clerk Department under professional fees. Next, you will see a request for $17,500 for supplies in the general fund related to cost increases and toner requirements. You may recall that the city is reviewing an opportunity for managed print services in fiscal year 2024 that should reduce these supply costs next year. Legal fees have exceeded the amended forecast for fiscal year 2023, and a corresponding increase of an additional $65,000 has been requested at this time. On the next page, staff are recognizing retirement plan expenses that were previously accounted for utilizing planned forfeitures, as well as anticipated costs associated with staff training related to the implementation of the city's new employee performance management system. That's in the Human Resources Department. There's also a request for $15,000 in the Risk Management Department associated with higher-than-anticipated premiums associated with the cybersecurity coverage. In court and police, we see those true-up for the benefit amendment requests. Fires recognizing $82,170 for a second set of helmets, boots, and SCBA masks that were part of the latter tender deployment proposal approved by council in July. And the last item on this page is the recognition of insurance proceeds received to cover expenses associated with winter weather damages to some of our facilities. The final two requests include the PEGO transfer to the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $2,270,334, as well as the release of contingency funding to offset the request we just went over in the amount of $181,334. The PEGO transfer will be allocated as follows, if approved. $71,650 from the sale of surplus vehicles will go back to the Vehicle Replacement Reserve accounts for the corresponding departments, and this distribution is listed in detail under the Capital Projects Fund, which we'll go over later. $1 million towards the planning, design, and construction of an indoor community center. $227,869 for the Police Department's migration to a new records management and CAD system. $19,485 for the installation of a gate to connect a fence in the employee parking entrance to the Public Safety Complex. This will be paired with some contingency funding, and we'll go over that later this evening, for a total cost of $65,000. And $951,330 for the purchase and equipping of a stock engine, as we discussed earlier, as part of that latter tender concept. The final general fund item to be discussed is the authorized position count across departments. Staff has included a chart to show the positions that were requested in the original adopted budget for fiscal year 2023. There were a few positions that were authorized but not funded at that time as the city awaited final loss negotiation details. The Police Department is currently working through a pilot program to determine the best path forward related to the FOIA records request position and, um, a third party, using a third party. At this time, there is a request to remove that staff position from the head count, and the Police Department will bring back a formal initiative request should the pilot program yield that a employee is the request that they have in the end. Similarly, two of the three Public Safety Ambassador positions went unfunded in the last summer's approved budget. Police have requested to remove those unfunded positions and have also requested to convert the current crossing guard position to that of a Public Safety Ambassador. The crossing guard hours have been difficult to fill, and converting this to a PSA will allow for cross-training across all four PSA positions to cover school crossing responsibilities, traffic control, park oversight, and more, without the split-up of hours to solely conduct school crossings in the morning and afternoon. This request will increase the budgeted hours from 1,040 annually to 1,300, and will include the request for one more vehicle to be shared among the four positions, and you will see that request outlined in the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $30,560. Next, you will see the reclassification of the Public Works operators from, to the seasonal category. As we solidify the new performance management system, the work schedule for these employees fit the definition of seasonal as opposed to the part-time category, so that's just a cleanup of moving them from one section to the other. And finally, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting to remove the two unfunded part-time staff for the Milton City Park and Preserve, as current staff are handling the duties at this location at this time. Once the facility is fully programmed, Tom and his team will reevaluate the staffing requirements and bring back any new initiatives for positions in a clear, um, new initiative category for that budget year. That brings us to the end of the requests for the general fund expenditures. Does anyone have any questions before we move on to special revenue funds? Edits to the Special Events Fund as associated with the Crab Apple Fest and the mayor's run revenues being allocated to corresponding expense categories, as well as the hotel motel tax revenue coming in higher than anticipated. So you'll see here the revenues collected going down to those corresponding expense lines, and we have revenues from the hotel motel tax coming in a little higher than anticipated, and we'll see that again here in the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. And that fund balance in the Special Events Fund will carry over to help fund next year's proposals. Next, we have the Confiscated Assets Fund. And the Police Department has identified eligible equipment and training that can be covered by confiscated asset funds, and this request is to allocate the existing fund balance across those corresponding expenditure budget categories. In the Operating Grant Fund, amendments are related to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Grant received by the Milton Police Department to allocate a budget across eligible spending categories, as well as requests to transfer to the general fund for eligible expenditures made last fiscal year. In the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, you will see the amendments associated with ARPA eligible spending. There is an increase to revenue to recognize the availability of funding, as well as the investment of income to recognize a higher-than-anticipated return on investment of idle funds in fiscal year 2023. So we have collected all of our revenues, but in this fund, we can only recognize them as they're spent. So you will see revenues coming in, although we know we've already collected one hundred percent of our revenues related to ARPA. Just wanted to clarify that. You will also see the transfer out to the general fund of that $1 million we spoke about, and as well as $423,348 to the Capital Projects Fund to reimburse the fund for ARPA eligible expenses, including the purchase of an ambulance, a CARES paramedic program vehicle, and eligible stormwater expenses anticipated to be incurred in this fiscal year. That concludes the special revenue funds. Does anyone have any questions before we move on to capital? In the Capital Projects Fund, you can see the proposed revenue amendments, including the removal of $250,000 related to IGA funding that will be directly accounted for in the T-SLOSS Fund. We will see this again when we go to the T-SLOSS Fund. This is a new anticipated revenue. There's a recognition of insurance proceeds and other IGA funding received in fiscal year 22 that have been transferred back over to the T-SLOSS Fund as well, and they are associated with two T-SLOSS intersection projects, Hopewatt Thompson and Hopewatt Handy, that have been completed. And finally, you will see the amended transfer in from the general fund of that $2.3 million that we went over in detail just a moment ago. Um, last year, we set up funding for stormwater-related expenses from the ARPA fund that had to be decreased due to the fact that they have not yet been incurred. So you're just seeing an update for that, and you'll see it again over the MCPP passive project, and we will, as we incur those expenses, re-issue those funds from the ARPA fund. At the bottom there, you can see $60,000 for improvements for the City Hall parking lot improvements to add additional spaces. $65,000 to the Public Safety Gate we discussed earlier. Again, part of that funding coming from the PEGO this year and part of it coming from contingency funding. We have the Police Department's Vehicle Replacement Account with a request of $17,550 for their portion of the sale of assets, as well as that $30,560 for that PSA vehicle should that position conversion be approved. The Police Department has also requested the $247,869 for the Records Management ICAD System. And there is a request for $26,089 in the Fire Department for the Fire Station 42 reconstruction. Back in, earlier this year, I think it was in May, change order number three to the Construction Contract Candy for you and explained that we would have this request coming before you for the stabilization of the subgrade. If we do come in under budget, these funds will go back towards other projects, and if... And we will also be able to utilize impact fees collected next year to reimburse the city for these funds. So they're, they will be reimbursable through the impact fee program. Finally, on this page, we have the $992,330 to purchase and equip the stock engine that we talked about. Continuing on to Public Works, Public Works has a request to allocate $70,431, we talked about, from the ARPA fund across eligible stormwater expenses at Fire Station 43, as well as Bethany Bend. $86,637 in insurance proceeds for bridge damages incurred earlier this year, and $10,600 from that sale of vehicles going back to their department account to replace vehicles. There's that request for $1 million towards the planning, design, and construction of an indoor community center. We're seeing that reduction for the ARPA funding that will be reallocated once expenses are incurred across that project for hydrology and stormwater. And the final items on this page include allocation of funding not spent on the Mayfield District Project across other community development projects, including $3,945 towards the UDC as staff work to finalize and codify those changes. $25,000 for the Arnold Mills Small Area Plan that Chiba discussed at the last meeting in August. And... $25,000, we talked about that, and, uh, new software for code enforcement in the amount of an additional $45,985. Uh, Community Development also has $2,500 of those insurance proceeds going back to their account. Finally, dispersing that contingency and recognizing the reduction of that transfer out to T-SLOSS, and that is the end of the Capital Projects Fund. We can move on to the Green Space Bond Fund. We're almost there. In the Green Space Bond Fund, we are updating anticipated tax revenue, related tax revenues, which were taken into consideration when calculating the required millage rate for 2024. So that's just recognizing those additional revenues that went into fund balance. The T-SLOSS Fund, you can see the allocation of higher-than-anticipated tax collections, investment income, and IGA funding to be allocated towards eligible projects. You will also see a request to allocate some of the current T-SLOSS II collections across project categories. The T-SLOSS II referendum was approved by spending category, and staff will be bringing additional requests to council to allocate the remaining collections once the comprehensive transportation plan is complete and provides guidance on community requests for spending. Staff has created a new table at the bottom that will show the funding going towards the overall category seen in the gold bar, and then broken down by individual project within that category. You can also see additional information by project on the project sheets in the 24 budget, and we'll go over that later this evening. So as we mentioned earlier, the impact fees were coming in lower than anticipated. This is due to the timing of when developers pay the fees. Fees are primarily assessed at the time of application for a building permit, but payment can be made either no earlier than the issuance of the building permit or no later than the issuance of the interior finishes or the certificate of occupancy, so there's a time delay sometimes. And here you have the amendments related to reducing the correlating, uh, projects. So finally, our final fund for this evening for the amendments is the Revenue Bond Fund, and we are recognizing interest revenues received and allocating them towards the project budget to construct Fire Station 42, along with the interest earnings from last year. Again, this was presented by staff in the documentation for change order number three to the Construction Contract. And any construction contingency not used, again, we'll go back to paying the city back for PEGO funding used. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Those are amendments at this time to finalize our fiscal year 2023 budget.
All right. Thank you, Bernadette. Do we have any, uh, public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay, closed public comment. Any council discussion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, will the city clerk please say on the next item?
Item B is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia to adopt the fiscal 2024 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the several items of revenue appropriations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. It's agenda item number 23241. Our Deputy City Manager, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Okay, putting our fiscal year 2024 hat now. We will discover the fiscal year, or talk about the fiscal year 2024 budget, which covers revenue collections and spending from October 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2024. Staff presented the draft budget in detail at the work session on August 14th, including all new initiatives, continuing operations, and market adjustment to salary requests. Tonight, we will present a high-level overview. We have some staff We have some staff in attendance, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have or bring forth. We have another public hearing on the 18th, so we can gather any information you may need at that time. Before you, we have the consolidated budget summary, which includes all budgeted funds, as well as those carrying a fund balance from one year to the next. We have the general fund, which accounts for all operating activity that is not required to be separated out into a special revenue fund or a capital projects fund. We have six special revenue funds, which are required to account for specific revenue sources and their corresponding spending, and six capital projects funds, which account for capital-related projects and purchases. The citywide budget, including budgeted spending across all funds, is $58.3 million. Please keep in mind that all capital projects are budgeted on a project-length basis, and any unspent funds will carry over into the next fiscal year as part of the city's capital improvement plan. Just a reminder that all budget requests must tie back into the city's planning process as outlined in each year's budget book. Each plan guides city spending and has requests received public input, as well as been adopted by the council. We have plans, including the five-year strategic plan, the comprehensive plan and its short-term work program, community development-related planning documents, transportation plans, the local road safety plan, pavement and stormwater plans, the T-SLOSS project list, the trail prioritization plan, other parks and recreation master plans, and as well as department-specific strategic plans. So those are all taken into consideration anytime a request for funding is made. Okay. So before you is the general fund budget summary. We just went over one of those in the amendment process, and now you can see the actual spending that occurred in fiscal year 2021, as well as 2022, and revenues received. You'll also see that amended budget for fiscal year 2023. These figures include all the amendment proposals that we went over earlier this evening. And then we have the request for proposals for fiscal year 2024. Between the last budget workshop in August 14th and now, we have had some updates to that amended budget in '23, and we did go over those in detail earlier, so I won't point those out throughout this process, but we will go over what changes have occurred in the 2024 request between that time and now. Between those two times, we have updated anticipated property tax revenues to reflect collections based on a 4.389 maintenance and operating millage rate as adopted by council. We have updated the request for public works by $43,566 to fund the previously approved part-time facilities technician assistance through our current facilities contract. Public Works is looking to utilize these services as we continue to centralize more functions under the facilities management umbrella. The 1% contingency has been updated by $436 based on this proposed change. And the transfer out to the special event fund in the amount of has changed to the amount of $18,466 is because it's been removed now that the special events fund can be self-funded by the revenue amendments we have made. With those updates taken into consideration, the overall revenue forecast for fiscal year 2024 equals $42,843,765, with ongoing revenues increasing by $1.5 million or 3.6% year-over-year between the amended budget and the proposed budget, and total revenues increasing by $392,565 or 0.9% when taking one-time transfers into consideration. Continuing operations excluding the required 1% contingency, as well as new initiatives, have increased by 3.9% compared to 2023's amended budget. A key component of this increase is the requested 4.7% market adjustment to salaries that has been based on the state and local government figures reported in the March 2023 Employment Cost Index put out by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. This approach was discussed by Deputy City Manager English during the presentations on the new employee performance management system. The overall impact of these adjustments, including the impact to salary-dependent benefit calculations, is $732,180 across all staff, of which $628,157 or 86% is attributable to salaries and wages. When taking the contingency and new initiatives into consideration, the year-over-year variance is $2.5 million or 8%. At the bottom of the summary, you will see the final projected fund balance at $11,120,863, which is in line with our required reserve policy of 25% of the subsequent year's revenues when looking at our five-year forecast. Anyone have any questions before I move on? So before you is the detailed revenue projections as mentioned earlier. All current year property tax revenues are based on the millage rate of 4.389, mills down from 4.469 in fiscal year '23. We went over all these revenues in detail back in August, so tonight I will just ask if there are any questions related to this, as those are the only items that have changed between then and now. Okay, so moving on to our new maintenance and operating initiatives, nothing has changed since the budget workshop in August. The multi-departmental requests will be allocated across the departments based on our best projection for occurrence and will be trued up at year-end, similar to the way we budget for other employee benefits that we discussed in the amendment process. I'll stop here to see if anyone has any questions or needs any more information about these Bear with me, we're almost there. So moving on to the special revenue funds, we have the special events fund with updates to the anticipated revenues related to the mayor's run registration, so the amount of $2,500, as well as the inter-fund transfers in removing the transfer from the general fund as projected revenues in fiscal year '23 and '24 will be able to support this fund. So you see that changing from $65,000 to $67,000. And then we had a slight change to the other events in the amount of, I think it was $886 to create a balanced budget. Similarly, we have that change in the hotel motel tax fund to recognize those revenues. So aside from the special events fund, the hotel motel tax fund, the only other change to the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget in the special revenue category is a projection of $50,000 in investment income to the ARPA fund and the transfer out of $245,064 to the general fund of those to-date interest earnings, as authorized by the program's final guidance. Next, we have our capital projects funds. So as with the general fund and the special revenue fund, some changes to the amended fiscal year '23 budget have been updated throughout the capital projects fund since our budget workshop, but the only fiscal year 2024 revenue forecast update is in the green space bond fund in the amount of $2,800, adjusting for anticipated revenues related to delinquent tax payments. Revenues in the T-SLOSS fund for fiscal year 2025 to 2030 have been updated, and projected funding has been set aside in the T-SLOSS II program management project under the infrastructure category until the CTP is finalized, and guidance is provided by council on how to distribute these funds. Staff has created a new table to show how we are accounting for all these funds. So you can see over the seven-year plan and also including last year's amended budget, both internal and external amendments in this budget amendment, as well as the requests coming forth. Here is the placeholder. We are asking you to put the funding in until the CTP is authorized, and then those funds will be allocated across the approved projects by these categories. But going back, we have our pay-as-you-go program listing for the whole seven-year CIP. And again, no changes have been made to any of these requests for the whole seven-year plan, so just want to show you again everything we got feedback on throughout the different sessions over the past few months is intact and is continued to be funding the way we've been discussing it. So I'll stop here to see if anyone has any questions about continuing capital. Just got two more items to discuss. In the new capital initiatives, we have the T-SLOSS request for a project inspector. We have this funding included in the project sheet for the program management, but we wanted to call it out separately for transparency to show how much that would cost. Again, this would increase the headcount in public works by one full-time employee, but will be funded by T-SLOSS dollars throughout T-SLOSS II. The position will be reevaluated if another round of T-SLOSS is not authorized in the future. And finally, there have been no changes to the new capital initiatives since the budget workshop. But again, staff is happy to answer any questions you may have about these new initiatives. And this concludes the changes that have occurred since the budget workshop on the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget.
All right. Thanks, Bernadette. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any council discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to our zoning agenda. Will the city clerk please read the zoning rules and sound the item?
Mayor, when this mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda, these items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting, which includes a zoning agenda. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The opposition will also be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to reboot. The applicant may choose to save some time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization before beginning their presentation. The planning commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and their recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should have already been submitted to the community development department and is included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within a two-year immediately preceding the filing of this rezoning action being opposed, can pain contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the planning commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the planning commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of U2302, located at 3450 Hamby Road by Tammy Urey to request a use permit for alternative senior housing, to use the existing single-family residence for a maximum of four residents. The first presentation was at the July 24th regular council meeting, zoning agenda on the August 7th, 2023 council meeting, and deferred to the September 6th regular council meeting. It is agenda item number 23184. Our zoning manager, Ms. Robyn McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have, as the city clerk outlined, an application for a use permit, and the applicant is Tammy Urey with Doffe Adult Community Services. It is located on Hamby Road, and it contains 2.15 acres. And there's an existing single-family residence approximately 5,000 square feet in size. So specifically, Ms. Urey is requesting a use permit for alternative senior housing, which is Section 64-1844, to use the existing single-family residence for a maximum of four residents. This is the location on the south side of Hamby Road. Right here is the Forsyth County line here. The zoning is AG1, and all the surrounding properties are also zoned AG1. In regards to the future land use map, it is designated as AEE, Agricultural Equestrian Estate Residential, as well as the surrounding properties. This is the site plan submitted on May 3rd, and I'll just show you, obviously, this is Hamby Road. They currently have two entrances to the property, one that goes to the lower level of the house and then to the upper level. And then they're also proposing the needed additional parking adjacent to the garage. Here is a blow-up zoomed in of the property, and here's the house with the handicapped parking, as well as the additional parking. And then along here is the property line with a 25-foot side setback. This is the front of the house, side of the house, side view. This is the second driveway I spoke of, a little bit further east off of Hamby. This is the rear of the property. This is the north view, looking toward Hamby. This is the south. And then the west that I just pointed out, adjacent to the parking area with lots of vegetation. And then to the east is a field, going toward Forsyth. According to the applicant's letter of intent dated May 3rd of this year, the applicant is requesting a use permit for an alternative senior housing facility for a maximum of four residents, serving seniors 55 and older with intellectual development disabilities supported by one full-time employee within the existing single-family residence with a total of 5,081 square feet. The staff member will support the individuals and their areas of need. The areas of need include meal preparation, laundry, housecleaning, shopping, activities of daily living, and advocacy. The applicant is accredited through the Commission on Accreditation of Rehabilitation and funded through the Georgia Medical Waiver. So I will just step through what happened previously with the planning commission recommendation of June 28th. Four citizens attended the meeting that spoke in opposition and were concerned with the alternative senior housing being used for drug rehab or mental illness. The opposing citizens requested that the existing home to remain a single-family type use. There was a discussion amongst the commission members about the applicant's vetting process for the potential four residents if the use permit was approved. The commission also acknowledged that the requested use does meet the 2040 Conference of Plan and that there is a need for 55-plus senior housing within the city. It was also acknowledged that the property could be subdivided into two single-family lots, given the size of the lot is 2.15 acres in AG1, which requires one acre minimum. The two commissioners who opposed the use permit stated that this was a difficult decision as there is a need for 55-plus senior housing within the city. They also voiced concern regarding the fact that any approved use permit isn't in perpetuity, and any potential succeeding owner would be allowed by right to continue the use. The commission recommended to add a condition to only allow residents with developmental disabilities and not for use for sober living homes, substance abuse recovery home, or halfway house. Staff has provided these recommended recommendations, which are highlighted in yellow at the end of the presentation, within the recommended conditions. In regards to the CDIM held on May 23rd here at City Hall, there were approximately five residents who attended the meeting. The majority of the residents were neutral and wanted to hear more information about the use permit request from the applicant, while one citizen voiced their opposition and wanted the house to remain a single-family type use. At the Design Review Board held on June 6th, they chose not to make a recommendation as the DRB felt their expertise was not needed, given the outside of the single-family residence would not change. One citizen voiced their opposition to the use permit. In regards to the public participation report that's required of our regulations for the applicant, the applicant held the meeting on Friday, June 9th, from 5:00 to 6:00 in Alpharetta at 401 South Main Street. There was a total of one attendee. The individual expressed support after receiving the information requested, and the required public participation plan was submitted on June 12th, which is within the seven days prior to the planning commission, as required per the zoning ordinance. In regards further to public involvement, city staff received support from two properties, Zero Hamby Road bordering the property to the east, and 3325 Hamby Road, property across Hamby Road to the west. On June 28th, city staff received 20 opposition signatures. Twelve of the citizens live in Milton, while eight live in Forsyth County. I have a more specific map of where they reside at, if you'd like to see that after the presentation. In regards to staff comments, the city arborists had none. The development engineer stated the development will be required to submit a land disturbance permit prior to construction of the additional parking on the site. The fire marshal stated the space shall adhere to the community living arrangement requirements and the state modifications noted in the state minimum fire safety standards for community living arrangement facilities. Public Works stated traffic study not required due to maximum occupancy of four residents. In regards to the environmental site analysis, it satisfies the requirement of the zoning ordinance. The applicant has addressed the various issues outlined in the report. There are no wetlands, floodplain, steep slopes, historical sites, or sensitive plant and animal. There are no wetlands, floodplain, steep slopes, historical sites, or sensitive plant and animal species. The applicant has included the treaty details for a subject site on the existing conditions plan. In regards to site plan considerations, I just want to go over a little bit exactly what is defined as alternative senior housing use permit. It means any dwelling, whether operated for profit or not, which undertakes through its ownership or management to provide or arrange for the provision of housing, food, service, and one or more personal services for two or more adults who are not related to the owner or administrator by blood or marriage. Personal services includes, but is not limited to, individual assistance with or supervision of self-administered medication, assistance with ambulation and transfer, and essential activities of daily living such as eating, bathing, grooming, dressing, and toileting. Just for your information, the current applicant was approved for a similar use, for actually the exact same use, alternative senior housing, at 3365 Cogburn Road pursuant to U-1804. It was approved with the existing structure as well as additional new structure added to it, but currently they only have three residents, and they have not made the expansion as what was approved. So also, I just want to remind that this use permit was created in 2015. City Council had adopted it, and basically it is meant to have the availability of assist, not assisted living, but personal care homes for 55 and over within the communities of Milton, and to look like a house, to act like a house, not to be a big box, so to speak, but to assimilate into the community. And this was also supported through the 2040 Conference of Plan that this use would be allowed in the AG1 zoning district as well as other residential zoning districts in the city. So right now, I'm just going to step through what the use permit requires and if they meet all the regulations. So I just mentioned that it is AG1, and it is allowed to be located in that zoning district. A facility shall be for people 55 and over, and yes, that is correct based on the applicant's letter of intent. The owner of the subject property may reside on the site. The owner will not reside at the site, but as stated, there will be 24-hour care for the residents. The home shall be approved and licensed by the State of Georgia or any agency through which it acts. And yes, based on the letter of intent, that's the intent of the applicant. Necessary staff may reside in illegal accessory buildings such as a guesthouse. It's not applicable, as they will not full-time reside there. They will just have 12-hour shifts and come in and out. A structure shall retain outward appearance of a single-family home, and as you can see from the pictures, that it meets that requirement. Off-street parking shall provide one parking space for two beds and one parking space for two employees, including the owner operating. Yes, this meets the minimum number of parking spaces, and the location of parking shall be located to the side and rear of the principal structure, but outside the minimum building setback. And yes, the applicant meets this requirement as well. Says, "No alternative senior housing facility shall be operated within 1,320 feet of any other alternative senior housing facility." And so this proposed facility, there are no other similar facilities within a quarter mile. The home shall obtain an occupation tax certificate prior to operation, and the applicant states that they will do that. So now, we're going to look at the different use permit considerations that are outlined within the zoning ordinance of Section 64-1552. Whether the proposed use is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the Mayor and City Council, the proposed development is zoned AG1, located in the AEE land use category in this 2040 Conference of Plan map. The proposed use permit for an alternative senior housing is permitted with an AG1 zoning and the Mayor and City Council, with the Mayor and City Council approval. The adopted 2040 Comp Plan states the following policy. "We will accommodate our diverse population by encouraging a compatible mixture of housing types, densities, and costs within the city." The subject site is compatible with the adjacent and nearby land uses and zoning, which includes AEE residential. The subject site is 2.15 acres, while every property that borders the subject site has a minimum of 11-plus acres in size. The property to the west is zoned AG1 and 19.3 acres in size. The property to the east and south is zoned AG1 and 11.1 acres. The two properties to the north across from Hamby Road are both zoned AG1 and 15.4 and 20.5 acres in size respectfully. The proposed use does not appear to violate any ordinances or regulations governing land development. Based on the type of use and scale, the proposed senior housing with four residents will be minimal impact on traffic flow, vehicular, pedestrian, on Hamby Road. Two curb cuts exist on Hamby for the subject site. The location and number of off-street parking spaces total required is three, and the total provided is four, of which one is for handicapped use. The rural Milton overlay district for this use is a maximum of 20% lot coverage, and this requirement is met. In addition, there's a large open field to the east and woods to the west and north adjacent to Hamby. The use permit in the rural Milton overlay district for this use does not require any screening, but city staff notes that the lot is heavily screened to the west and north of the existing house. Hours of operation will be 24 hours a day and seven days a week, as stated in the letter of intent, that there will be one staff member on site. The applicant has not indicated there will be any additional lighting, but if any is proposed, it will be required to meet the night sky ordinance per Section 64-185. And lastly, the applicant has two existing curb cuts on Hamby Road. Public Works has reviewed the site and stated no traffic study will be required due to the maximum occupancy of four residents. In conclusion, the proposed development of the alternative senior housing use permit is consistent with the City of Milton 2040 Conference of Plan and map and consistent with the use permit considerations. The proposal also provides additional choices for housing for the over 55 population within the city. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of U-2302 with the following recommendations. For this use of the alternative senior living facility, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. Restrict the use of the subject property to an alternative senior living facility for individuals with developmental disabilities but not for use for a sober living home, substance abuse recovery home, or halfway house. Restrict the total square footage to 5,081 square feet of the primary existing residence. Restrict the maximum number of residents of the alternative senior living facility to four. To the owner's agreement to abide to the following substantial compliance with the site plan received by the Community Development Department on May 3rd. And I will be happy to answer any questions you all may have on this request.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions before we have public comment? Councilor Moore?
Yeah, just with a question. We approved, I think, back in 2021, the one, I guess it's the same owner, same operator.
It was 2018. I'm sorry, it was in 2018 that was approved.
Okay, so it's been there for a number of years, operating. Have we had any complaints at all by neighbors with that property?
No, we haven't, and there was a question about, a concern about the number of possible 911 calls, and I requested of the Police Department and Fire Department, and there have been three requests for call for 911 emergencies since the inception of that facility.
So between 2018 and 2023, we've only had three calls.
I mean, I imagine that they didn't start right at 2018, so to be fair, 2019, yes.
So it's not, it's not been a heavy impact as far as public safety and that side? And no complaints for neighbors? I know we've got people on either side of that house?
No.
And it is, just to be certain, it is the same applicant?
It is, yes.
So it would be a similar use?
Lovely Mrs. Urey, yes, I worked with her.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Cookerly?
Counselor, I have a question on the recommended conditions. Would that restriction to be in the proposed use, would that also carry into perpetuity?
It would, yeah. The conditions travel with the use permit, so they would attach to the land as well.
Okay, so that will always be the extended condition?
That is correct.
Okay.
Councilor Moore?
Same type of question for Mr. City Attorney. So the use permit is for perpetuity for the property. It does not, if there was a sale of the property, this particular use permit would not end? Or is that a consideration that we might take?
The use permit travels with the land, and that's just the law, like any other sort of approved zoning. When you sell your home and somebody else moves in, the zoning is going to be the same. Now, a use permit can be a little different, because I know this may be sort of tailored to this, I guess, owner and operator. But my position is, is the only way to take this use permit away would be to follow the zoning procedures law, have a public hearing, and then take it away. So, you know, I've seen it done. In fact, I've got jurisdictions I work in that if they grant a use permit and it's not put into use within like 18 months, they'll put it back on an agenda and take it away, so it doesn't just sit there and languish. Short answer is, is yes, it does travel, and it will travel in perpetuity unless we.
If there were a future sale of the property, it's not necessarily a requirement that the future owner use the use permit.
Oh heavens, no. They could use it for a strict residential home.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Jacobus?
Yeah, Robin, the home on Cogburn was approved for eight, correct?
That is.
Eight residents?
Yes, uh-huh.
And they're only using, they only have three residents there now?
Correct, yes.
I guess my question and concern is, why are we doing another one when they haven't filled this one?
That'll, yeah, I think that'll be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, I guess we'll call people in support first.
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to invite Ms. Tammy Urey, the applicant, to the podium, please.
It's 10 minutes aside, is that correct?
10 minutes per side, yes, Mayor.
Hi, I'm James Urey, and this is my wife Tammy Urey. I'm going to answer your questions first.
Will you state, will you state your address really quick?
Pardon?
Will you state your address for the record?
3625 Cottage Drive, Milton, Georgia.
Thank you. Proceed.
Okay, so to answer Councilman's question as far as why we did not proceed with the approval of eight, and we only have, we've only occupying two, three individuals. The current house is about 1,000 square foot, so the addition would have well exceeded the cost versus buying another property and going through this process. But the terrain on Cogburn Road, the site conditions were too difficult to try to extend it back and add to that particular location. So that's why we didn't use that. In the case of Hamby Road, again, we're appealing to you guys to use this location for individuals with developmental disabilities. That's our intent. That's been our mission for the past 23 years since the inception of this company. I think a lot of people in this room, I was up earlier with cancer. There's also a lot of people in this room, if you ask, to raise their hands. Do they know anyone, or do they have a relative that has autism, Down Syndrome? Those are the individuals that we house, and when they reach a certain point, their parents passes on, and they're in their 50s, 60s. No parents where to take them. And my wife's vision was, let's start this business, which was 23 years ago, to take these individuals in, and most of the people are senior citizens. They're afraid to even walk to the mailbox, so they're not even going to walk outside and wander around and affect anybody else. But this is, you know, when I play back what some of the people opposed, their reason why, it really touched me, and that's why I decided to come up today. And I've been, I'm in the backfield, I'm a contractor, I do the work, I do the construction and things like that. But I decided to step up and speak today, because anybody in this room can raise their hand. If you go to Cambridge High School, there's special needs children there. When I was growing up, they were segregated from us. They couldn't come to the same school. Today, we have become more open and receptive to others. So they're in school with us, they're in classrooms, they're in our neighborhoods. They're not those people that you point over there and say, "Those are those guys," you know? So from 1960 till now, the transition, and I would hate to see that Milton is in opposition of something that we're trying to be inclusive to. So that's my comment, and I think Robin has illustrated everything we're about to present to you guys today. But she's done an excellent job of illustrating the use permit. This isn't a special use, it's a use permit, and it's our intention to keep the business as small and grow incrementally. Our son runs part of the company, and he was able to convince his college buddies to come join our team. Cam and Tiffany, Alabama guys, you know, if you're Georgia, hey. And there's Josh over there. So he brought all his friends to help support and grow this company in a way that he grew up watching us do it, you know? And so we're appealing to you guys to vote on our behalf.
Thank you.
By the way, I am Tammy Urey, and I just want to say hello to everyone. I don't think that we're going to take away by having the four individuals served on Hamby Road. We're actually gonna, they're contributors, they're loving, they're kind, they're consumers. They're like you and I, vice versa. So there's, it's not going to be a takeaway by having four individuals on Hamby Road. It will just be a positive interaction. So thank you all for hearing us.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We'll get the questions a little later. Thank you. Do we have any body else in support?
We do. Mayor, I'd like to invite Polly Hyatt to the podium, please.
Hello, I'm Polly Hyatt, 15170 High Grove Road, Milton. I have a 33-year-old son who has been in the Doffey programs, and I can tell you, they are a family. I know that all of us, when we go out and look for a place to live, when we see a new neighbor come into our neighborhood, we're wondering, is this a place that's stable, that's peaceable, that's quiet? We all want that. And when I looked for a home for my son about four years ago, that's exactly what I was looking for, and that's where he is happy. So as Mr. and Mrs. Urey said, that's the way that it is, we're all the same, we're all looking for the same thing. And I'd also just like to briefly give a shout out to the Urey's. Mrs. Urey is a person of integrity, she's a person of high character, she's a person of sound judgment, and she keeps her word. So she is the person that you want to be in charge of this kind of thing. Thank you, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Please call next speaker.
Next speaker in support is Tracy Markoff. I invite you to the podium.
Tracy Markoff, 260 Hopewell Close Lane, Milton. My daughter's been served for 15 years by Doffey's Day Program, and I'm hoping that when she gets to the age where she would qualify or be in need of something, when I'm obviously too old to take care of her, that something like this would be available to her. I think it's very important, like Polly was saying about the integrity of the Urey's and what they're trying to provide is inclusion in the community, and I think your approval of this is consistent with the other proclamations from this evening related to, you know, childhood cancer, mental health issues, and suicide. I think it's. I think it's all about the inclusion of the community and keeping them in the community where these individuals have been living for all of these years. My daughter's a perfect example of having lived here since over 20 years in Milton. So I hope that you'll approve it.
Thank you.
Mayor, the final support, and then we'll go into opposition, is Mr. Richard Fanning. I invite you to the podium.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Richard Fanning. This is my wife, Eileen Fanning. We live at 3865 Cottage Drive in Alpharetta, Georgia. This neighborhood we live in is just off Hamby Road. And we are friends with both Tammy and James Urey. We recently learned of their effort and challenge of trying to start up a group home for disabled seniors here on Hamby Road. Both my wife and I know the Urey's and their business to be an excellent opportunity for disabled folks and their families to have a chance at some level of a normal life and home. We're in favor of approving the zoning variance. There are other businesses on Hamby Road already, and I honestly can't think of a better addition than of assisting those who need it most. Disability can touch any one of us at any time and in any way. It could be a family member, a friend, or even ourselves who may require assistance one day. It is in our best interest as a compassionate and forward-thinking community to be proactive in our approach, in our approach to helping the disabled live comfortably among us. Moreover, we should foster a culture of inclusivity and support within our community. This involves providing resources, advocating for policies that benefit people with disabilities, and creating an environment where they feel welcomed, valued, and respected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our supporters?
That concludes this report. I'll now move into opposition. I'd like to invite Mr. James Limbaugh to the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is James Limbaugh. I live at 3305 Hamby Road. And I just had a few points that I wanted to bring to your attention that you're probably already aware, but I'll go and restate it. My biggest concern with this zoning request, this permit request, is the precedence that it's setting. I personally, I mean, I have no issues with the type of business. I think it's very noble. I just have a problem with the actual permit request and the long-term, you know, the precedence that it has. I mean, it's there forever until it goes back through this zoning process. The Doffey family sounds like a very great family, business owners. But if they sell the house to the next person, I don't, I don't know them. I don't know what they're going to be like or what they're going to do to that house that's across the street from my house. The other thing is the precedence that I mentioned. We are right there on the Forsyth-Fulton County line. In Forsyth County, we've had challenges with them of trying to commercialize their portion of Hamby Road. And what's helped us in the past has been the fact that, on the Milton side, that it's been agricultural residential homes. And so my concern is that if this gets approved, then Forsyth County will see that as, you know, the residents on that side will see it as an opportunity. And in the past, we've had to fight storage unit facilities. We've had to stop commercial businesses from trying to rezone. So that's another big concern that I have. I'm also concerned about the increased noise and activity. I know that earlier it was mentioned that there was three EMS calls. You know, I did an open records request on the Cogburn property. I got from Ms. Wolf that it was 13 calls between EMS, police, and fire. So I'm not really sure. But if it is 13, then it's, it sounds like a lot to me. I've been in my house for eight, nine years, and I've never had any of those services called out to my house before. And then the other thing that I'll bring up is, I'm not alone. It was mentioned earlier that there's 20 signatures on a petition in opposition and that if need be, a map could be provided. You probably have already, already seen that map. And you'll notice from the map that it is predominantly the homes that are in the surrounding area to the Hamby, the Hamby Road address. Now, the, there is two parcels that are in favor of the permit request. However, that, those two parcels are owned by the same person and is also the same individual who sold them the Hamby Road house. So just, you know, just take that into consideration, if you would. And then the last point that I have is, yeah, the only, the other thing I'd ask is just, you know, if it were, if it were, this were going on next to your house, you know, how would you feel about it? And that's really all I have. Thank you for your time. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Please call our next speaker.
I'd like to invite Mr. Fred Carr to the podium, please.
I'm Fred Carr. I live at 3309 Hamby Road, which is right across the street from where they're wanting to put the retirement thing. My granddaddy bought that land 90 years ago. Hamby Road was dirt. He made sogum syrup, grew cotton. We ran it when I was five years old. Bowed a mule right across the street. When we voted to go to the city of Milton, we voted for horses and cows. That's what they ran on. I'm opposed to it because it'll be a change. Once this one's in, they're already talking about putting one behind it. There's 22 acres for sale right next to it that adjoins it. I don't know how, what the law reads on, if they can buy that land and do the same thing with that or not. But I will tell you, that house that they're wanting to do this in only has three bedrooms on the main floor. That's it. It has its own well, and it's on a septic tank. There's no sewer. Not down that road. No water. That well puts out three gallons a minute. That's it. They want to put four people in there plus other to do handy work or whatever, to look after and laundry. Won't support it. Septic tank won't support it. And like I say, we voted for horses and cows. We didn't vote to put retirement things in. I'm sure what they're doing is great. But I'm sure they have a lot of these, probably 29 of them. And I'll bet you that they got vacancies in more than one of these buildings. So we don't want to see it. Once it changes, this land was passed out to my mama, to me. And once it goes to change, the taxes out of there. We won't be able to keep the land once, once these buildings come in. We're done. Where do we go? There's nowhere to go. At our age, we got doctors to go to. We got to move way off and get somebody to drive us. So we're opposed of it because we know what's coming. It'll be one right after another. We'll come down through there. What they're doing is fine. We just don't need it on Hamby Road. We don't. So like I say, I'm sure they got other facilities that hold, would hold four people. That's all they're going to put in there, is four. And they got on about 29 of them, give or take some. And I'll bet you they could put them right there and not, not mess up a little piece of heaven that we have. Granddaddy bought almost 70 acres there for $2,300. And it had a house on it and a 500-pound bellicot. And this is where we are now. We're changing. But we're not changing in a good way. We're changing in a way that's going to bring more businesses and more people. People's okay, but the business isn't this time. They could go anywhere and do the same work. If they're, if they are really concerned about looking after retirement people, you can go downtown. There's, there's office places to rent. There's buildings. They could build one down there. Don't come into a residential and use an AG1 so they come in the back door. And they're already talking about building one behind it. So we're opposed of it. If it comes, we can't stay. Not in a few years. I'm 72. I'll be 80 probably long before you know it. Where do I go? So I'm asking you to turn it down. Let them go somewhere else. I mean, we don't need it. I guarantee you, they got four of us somewhere. So three gallons, three gallons a minute. That's what the well does, septic tank. I think when they submitted their original thing, they said it was on sewer. That's not true. So I'm asking you to turn it down. Let them go somewhere else. Or they got room for four people somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment on this item, sir.
Okay, so we will close the public comment period. And any questions for staff? Council discussion? Councilor Moore?
Yeah, I did just get a couple of clarifications based upon some comments. Robin, with the comprehensive land use plan, this area, we can't build traditional commercial. Is that correct?
That is correct.
This is a form of residential, although it is considered a business, but it's really under the category of residential living.
Right, it's a use, a use permit that has to be approved by you all and that it is permitted to be considered under the AG1 and that it is consistent with the land use plan. But somebody couldn't come and do a gas station there or even do high-density residential because you have to stay at one acre, so.
And that goes along with the urban growth boundary. We put that in place. That was another protection to make sure that we don't get commercial or somehow get creep within Milton coming over from a commercial standpoint.
Correct. And then just want to reiterate the, you can't build one right next to it. It has to, they have to be at least a quarter mile away from each other. So I know that's not a huge distance, but it's not next door, so.
Yeah, that was one of my other questions is, because there was a point of it's going to proliferate. There's going to be these type of houses all around. And I think what I heard the original gentleman speak, Mr. Urey, said that to read the house that they have right now, they got a permit for eight, but that was with, going to have new structure built to it. They can't accommodate eight, eight in the structure that they have today.
Correct. That's what he was saying, that it's a thousand-square-foot structure. And they have no, it doesn't work out at this point in time to expand or to add the proposed additional building, so.
Just, just a comment. I don't know if we're at a point where we can make comments or.
Sure.
I've got a very, a very dear friend who has a 42-year-old son who's 6'2", who has intellectual disabilities because of something that happened at birth where the person didn't get the oxygen. Very nice man. But his father, now in his 70s, is concerned because he still has to take care of that son. And they're concerned what happens when they pass. My, my view, I guess, on some of these things is, if you look, if we truly are going to be a complete community where we look at people, not just people that are just like us, but people that are, that are out there in the community that need help. Me, I think this is something that actually speaks to a need that's there. In fact, when we as a council did senior housing, when this category came up, because people were saying there's some single older people that need some assistance but still can be independent. And that also required, just as this does, someone to live there or to be there, not to live, but to be there to help. It's not just people living there like an apartment. It's someone being there to help. And I know in the past in America, people used to be institutionalized. That's what would happen when people got to this type of, when, when the parent couldn't take care of them, they were turned over to the state. To me, I think this is much more compassionate and more in line with what we've said. We want to be from a total community, not just an exclusive community. And I think this is something that, from my standpoint, I think we can still accommodate it. We already have one that the Urey's are running, and we haven't heard any complaints from neighbors around. That was my concern. If this was a big impact to people around there, we've had a few years for them to actually experience. So from my standpoint, I just want to say that I'm supportive of this based upon what I've heard.
Okay, Councilor Cokerly?
Hi, could I ask the Urey's a couple of questions, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I saw at various points, when there were comments in opposition, that there were things with which you didn't agree. Would you clarify the record from your point of view?
One comment was made that they pulled an Opens Record Act, and there was 13 911 calls. If he could validate the date in which we started that home, it's probably from maybe the previous owner that his Open Records Act may have disclosed. So we only know of three.
One was during COVID.
Right.
One was, I called the police because our mailbox was getting knocked down, septic was being hit. And that was two I called because I, I want, I wanted to show them the camera of the person who was knocking the mailbox down.
I understand.
Yeah, so I don't recall what the third one may have been, so.
Okay.
Right, so validate that. Another thing is, we're approved for eight, but under the guideline of which this funding is provided through the state of Georgia. The community living arrangement only allows four individuals. So we, one, we knew that we couldn't take this over and we couldn't expand the house forward to add a fourth bedroom because each individual has to have their own bed. So to expand it, we would have encroached on the buffer to go forward towards the street. It would encroach on the buffer to go behind the house to add one more bedroom. It's too much to create a stem wall to build up and bring the house and add it on. So doing all of that just didn't make sense for one more individual. That's a business decision. Two, we cannot build next to each other. We cannot move, move, move another home right next door. The state requires that. It's a community living arrangement so that these individuals are part of, instead of them being pointed out, that across the street on Hamby Road, we got 29 homes over there with 29. They want it seamless, and that's the intent of the state. And that's the intent of even the zoning requirements. It's just as we're asking for. We don't have 29 homes. This is our second here. We have the training facility in the city of Alpharetta. So during the day, when someone that ages out of high school, their parents goes to work, right? So then they come to the training facility that we have on, in, in Alpharetta, downtown Alpharetta. And we, you know, there's a training facility there. We train them.
I'm going to, I'm just going to interrupt because you've, you've covered the things that were, I think, of interest.
Right, okay.
And that needed clarification. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Anything else?
Yeah, I was, I was going to make a couple of comments. So I, I appreciate, a gentleman said earlier that certainly is a noble cause. And it tugs at all of our heartstrings. I certainly have an obligation to think through what those in opposition feel about the situation. So there's nothing like an onsite visit. I couldn't find your property the other day in the pouring rain. But if you wondered who was stalking you today by coming up in your driveway, because I couldn't, wasn't sure. your driveway, because I couldn't, wasn't sure, I was in the left driveway. I, I wasn't in the right area. But my, and with all respect to those in opposition, I think I see it this way. I understand Hamby Road. I've been here a long time. And, you know, there is the angle that if this stays AG1, this two-acre lot, and it stays with this special use permit with the condition, you know, the chances are very good it will stay as a residential unit for a very long time. And I think that, that, you know, wards off any kind of a commercial appeal that we normally think of in terms of, of a commercial experience. When I came to your location today, because of the, I don't know what that is, probably half or three-quarters of an acre of woods in front of your house, I mean, it's, it's virtually unseeable. And it's a private location for your cause. Not that I am saying that it needs to be hidden. I'm just saying that as something that I think should cause neighbors' concern, that there's a lot of coming or going or activity, that just would not be obvious, I would think. So, my bottom line is I'm gonna support it. And I just like to get to the point, you know? And again, it is with this recommended condition that was considered by staff of what exactly can be there and what can't be there. And I think with that, you have my support.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. If any of the council have questions, y'all have the right to ask questions of individuals, but once the questions are answered, I think the individuals need to enter their seats, just because the public hearing's over. So, we, you know, again, we can ask questions, let's get those answered, but then I think that then the podium needs to be relented.
Understood. Any other questions? Okay, with that, we'll open it for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Then we approve agenda item number twenty-three dash one-eight-four with staff's recommended conditions.
Second. One-eight-five or? The one-eight-four, okay, one-eight-four, okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Councilor Moore, a second from Councilor Moore to approve agenda item number two-three dash one-eight-four with staff's recommended conditions. Do we have any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, well, the city clerk, please say on the next item.
Mayor, the next item is consideration of RZ twenty-three zero-four, a text amendment to amend Chapter sixty-four as it relates to flag lots. The first presentation was at the July twenty-fourth regular meeting, zoning agenda at this August seventh regular meeting, and then deferred to tonight's meeting. It's agenda item number twenty-three one-eight-five.
Should I wait till the mayor gets back?
Always a good idea.
Ask questions.
You could start without me.
Never.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. We are here tonight for a land use project from the Short Term Work Program. Perform due diligence to implement restrictions on flag lots. This item is RZ twenty-three oh-four, a text amendment to amend Chapter sixty-four as it relates to flag lots. The 2040 comp plan started in 2020. CPAC was tasked with providing flag lot input during the comp plan meetings. In October 2021, the 2040 comp plan was adopted by the mayor and council. From March to September of last year, staff completed our research and the project scope. Last October, we received feedback from Plan Commission where they recommended prohibiting flag lots citywide. Last November, we received feedback from mayor and council that you wanted to find a middle ground solution and recommended getting more direction from industry and to hold a public meeting. This February, staff held our flag lot discussion meeting at Community Place, and I'll expand on that later in the presentation. This April, we presented our findings from the flag lot discussion meeting, mayor and council, and May through September as the text amendment On April twenty-fourth, we received feedback from mayor and council to move forward with the text amendment process. The CZIM was May twenty-third and no one from the public attended. Planning Commission heard the item on June twenty-eighth, and I'll expand on their recommendation later in the presentation as well. At the August seventh meeting, this item was deferred by mayor and council. And finally, mayor and council is tonight. Let's circle back to the flag lot basics. Lot frontage is defined at the street, which requires thirty-five feet, follow my cursor, and the flag stem can thin down to fifteen feet. All setbacks and all building requirements happens after the flag stem. Here's a list of some flag lot concerns. Development pattern concerns and the appearance of higher density. When you have multiple flag lots stacked against other flag lots, it gives the appearance of higher density. And also, the flag stem is allowed to count toward the minimum one-acre AG1 lot size requirement. This essentially shrinks the overall billable area of the footprint after the flag stem. Eight total people attended the flag lot discussion meeting, many of whom are large landowners with existing horse farms in this city. The meeting was over two hours long with very in-depth conversations on what was best for the future of Milton. The consensus from the group was to eliminate flag lots in major subdivision. There is not a consensus on flag lots outside of major subdivision, but staff worked with all interested parties to come up with a solution to address CPAC's concerns. On June twenty-eighth, the planning commission recommended denial, and the following statement was made by PC. This is also voted unanimously to forward to mayor and city council. It is a sense of the commission that the proposal does not adequately reflect and is inconsistent with the views as expressed by the committee in the 2040 comp plan. We recommend, as is recommended by CPAC, flag lots shall be prohibited in the city of Milton as they have been in adjacent communities of Alpharetta, Roswell, and John's Creek. We recognize that we want to retain the beauty of Milton that was called out numerous times by citizens of Milton, and we do not want to give that up and become an Alpharetta, Roswell, or John's Creek. Flag lots are specifically addressed in the 2040 comp plan on pages one-oh-two, one-oh-three, one-oh-seven, and one-seven-four. Here's a brief overview of minor versus major subdivision. A minor subdivision is no more than three lots or any number of lots that are three acres or more in size, and a major subdivision has four or more lots, curb and gutter, road dedication, and at least one dedicated lot for stormwater, and these lots are all less than three acres in size. Text amendment staff recommendations. Flag lots are prohibited in major subdivision. A flag lot shall be a minimum of one and one-half acres in size. The stem of the flag lot shall constitute no more than ten percent of the total lot size. Here's a text from section sixty-four seventy-seven detailing the proposed changes. Prohibit flag lots and major subdivision citywide, which again, which was universally accepted by everyone at the flag lot discussion meeting and back in February. We believe flag lots and major subdivisions would not meet CPAC's vision and would be used as a tool by developers to maximize their lot yield. One-point-five acre minimum flag lot size requirement. You can see how the footprint of the house is not built setback to setback like the one-acre flag lot example from earlier. You can truly visualize that extra space and lower appearance of density. And finally, a maximum of ten percent of the total lot size can count toward the flag stem. As you can see in the one-point-five acre example, the maximum stem length is four hundred feet, which can make up ten percent of the total lot area when you have a one-point-five acre size flag lot. If you want a longer flag stem than four hundred feet, you need to make the billable area after the flag, after the stem bigger to make up for the longer stem. In summary, staff is proposing, we believe, is not only a middle ground solution, but the minimum changes needed to meet our goal from the Short Term Work Program, meet CPAC's vision, and to preserve Milton's rural character. Any questions for staff before you open to the public?
One quick question. Was stem width ever discussed, the width of the stem?
That creatively was never brought up during the process.
Okay, just curious.
In consideration of flag lots, is there a requirement that, typically when we're addressing flag lots, it's because there's a larger lot, larger lot owned probably by a single family, and their intention is to subdivide maybe for family or children growing up or other, you know, or maybe just to sell them. But typically, we're working around an existing structure on the larger lot before it's subdivided for the flag lots. Is there a requirement that the existing structure of any capacity remain on the first ownership?
It would have to meet primary setbacks and everything or seek a variance, if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm actually saying, could, here's, here's my concern, is that somebody has a sizable piece of property, and they recognize that there might be a greater yield by doing a flag lot development rather than a minor subdivision nor major subdivision. And so, in the possibility of a requirement that the existing structure of the initial ownership remain, that prohibits that kind of a workaround.
I understand your question. So, a minor subdivision could be three lots or less. So, if they're just doing two flags to keep an existing home, they're technically under the minor subdivision category, and they aren't hit with stormwater requirements, curb and gutter that a major subdivision would.
But again, the initial home is not necessarily required to remain, or is it?
It has to meet current city Milton zoning ordinance setbacks, lot coverage. So, it's got to be brought to code, either through the variance process or demoing it and building a new one. Has to meet all the new standards.
Okay.
Councilor Cookerly, then Councilor Moore?
Um, hello. So, previously, we had some discussion in this scenario about adding a provision to be able to go to VRZ for one, one-acre lot in this scenario. Is that feasible? And how does that affect this, this configuration?
Yeah, and any request that is not below the minimum district standards, which in AG1 is one acre, you can seek a variance to the board of zoning appeals. So, if the one-point-five was approved, from one-point-five down to one-point-one, you could seek a variance to the size and take your hardships in front of the BZA and make your case.
Okay, so that would actually, that exist without the need to put that language in?
That is correct.
Mm-hmm. Councilor Moore?
Just to clarify, so, three acres, three homes or less, minor subdivision, this is saying you could use flag lots, where that's what the recommendation is. If it's four or more, it goes into the major subdivision, and we've already voted to eliminate flag lots from major subdivisions. Is that correct?
That's correct. Unless the three acres or more, then they could have as many as they want, but yes. With a large lot incentive.
And Michael, on this description here, on this, what's, what's the yield without the flag, flag lots? Just one because it's so narrow? If, if flag lots was prohibited, is the yield one?
The lot width. Is around one-seventy? So, yes, essentially it would be one lot, because the lot width requirement currently is a hundred-and-fifty feet.
Okay. All right, Councilor Johnson?
Do you know about how many properties in the city of Milton this would be affecting, I guess?
That's a great question. There are currently, I have a slide for it, three-hundred-and-fifty parcels in the city that are on exterior streets that are three acres or more in size. So, it's not a huge number. We can see the number of parcels in the city, but overall, we think of it a case-by-case basis.
But three-acre lots are pretty popular right now, right? So, I would think that, yeah, I would think that the number would be fairly small.
Any other?
The whole purpose of this is to ensure that we have probably more senior residents that have held this piece of property for a long time are not losing any property rights.
Yeah, no, I mean.
We're still finding a pathway for them to accommodate that.
Trying to balance property rights with greater good.
Yeah.
Steps all over property rights.
In a way.
It does. I mean, I don't see how you can say it doesn't stop on property.
Wait, wait, I, you know, I'm actually gonna disagree with that, because here's, here's the problem with it. You're the person who owns that lot, but it might just hammer the property rights of neighbors if it's not done right or with certain conditions, because all of a sudden, your neighbor does this and your, your property may be a whole lot less valuable. So, we're just trying to find that balance between unintended consequences for the person who owns the property and the neighbors and the people across the street, I think.
Councilor Moore?
Where I think this is a good compromise, the concern of just saying, okay, we could do flag, let's say you've got a three-acre parcel, but then the, the stem for the flag lot is included in that, you're starting to whittle it down the size of the actual buildable or usable lot. Then, then it really, then where the home, whatever, would reside with septic would be smaller. I think as long as they've got an opportunity to deal and go forward for variance, I think this gives it, gives a good option. The concern I've got is, I think when this first came up and the recommendation was to eliminate all flag lots in Milton from the, all them open roads, from people that have property they've held on to for a while, if they want to have a child and build behind, well, if we restrict the ability of having flag lots, the ability to get back there, it basically renders their property undevelopable, except for the house that they already have. That was, I think, when we started talking about this, that from a property rights, I think it makes sense to allow flag lots for, for individual homeowners that have larger parcels, because then they have a chance to actually do. And I know you can go to other counties. Some places, some places have built their family compounds because they've been able to have other homes, the family members lived close to them. There's maybe more of a trend of seeing that happen in America than what used to. So, I still, I'm in favor, I think, the compromise that you guys have brought forward versus just saying we're not going to allow flag lots, especially on, on the open road lots.
And I think we're kind of jumping ahead. I know we have a whole presentation here, but.
Can I just throw in a little bit of recent trending? We've had about three different minor plats, or not necessarily flag lots, but there are minor plats, you know, there were four or five acres, subdividing into three, three lots, maybe one and a half to each. And what do you know? They call us back up. We want to dissolve those property lines. We want, instead of three lots, we want two or we want one. So, it's, I can't predict the future, but I'm just saying, property's more valuable to people, I think, now as larger lots. We even had a large lot subdivision on Thompson that was a great scenario, and there was a property owner who found it, and we're dissolving all the lots because she wants an estate on eighteen acres instead of what was already there. So, just, just for information, I mean, it doesn't predict the future, but it's just been an interesting trend we've seen in the last couple of months of people wanting larger lots. So, it may impact the possibility of how often will there be flag lots, other than in the scenarios with families. Obviously, they want to do that, so.
Thank you for that anecdote. It gives me hope.
It's Robin, while you're still at the podium, there may be a question that you and Michael can tag team on if it's.
I'm sorry, say that again.
There may be a question for you and Michael both. On a flag lot application, there isn't the ability today for any new construction to be forward of the existing structure, correct? All the, I think back to the, to the conversations that we had back in CPAC about why there was some concern about this, you know, having been through several of them. I remember, you know, this being a pretty spirited debate, but one of the concerns at the time was the appearance of overdevelopment. And so, I think we resolved that by saying there couldn't be any structure, new structure built forward of the existing structure. And as such, really, the appearance of the lot doesn't change because all the new development would be behind.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct in general, but we have had scenarios for variances where.
Accessory structure type of thing.
Where there's a small, you know, nineteen-sixties house, and then they want to use that as the guest house, so they have to ask for a variance, and then they would possibly build a new house behind it.
But it comes forward with a variance for something like that, right?
Right, they would have to ask for a variance, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Michael, we'll continue, I guess, with your presentation. We got a little off track, but it was good, good discussion.
Well, that, that was it.
Oh, that was it? Oh, great.
Perfect.
Perfect, that's great. Do we have any public comment?
We do, mayor.
Okay.
I'd like to invite Lauren Holmes to the podium, please.
Okay. Now, is this, are we doing support and against on this? Since the zoning item?
I have two, and they did not mark if they're in support or in opposition.
Okay.
That would be against.
Okay, do we have any in support?
Got to hear support first, just zoning agenda, no.
Anybody in support? Okay, that was good.
Lauren Holmes, one-three-nine-hundred, Haygood Road. I added a few little notes on here after you all spoke, so I may be. so I may be running around here and there. So part of the CPAC was, y'all talked about affordable properties. Last October, if a family looking for an affordable lot to build on could find a one acre lot, 100 feet wide, that had a septic system that perked, they could have built their home. These are just some of the restrictions in Milton now. A 40-foot rule of view shed, a 75-foot stream buffer where the state only requires 25 feet, architectural restrictions throughout Milton, a second structure restriction extending the width of an AG1 lot to 150, and now flag lots. I can agree with no flag lots in major parcels. Today, you are offering a lot of minimum of 100, excuse me, one and a half acres and a stem of no more than 10% in 150-foot lot width. You have just devalued the land and in some cases required the land to be two and a half acres or more due to the possible length of the stem. Now, that is not affordable. I believe there should not be any restrictions on minor plats with flag lots. There should be a one acre minimum excluding the stem, no maximum on the stem, and 100-foot minimum lot width and let the septic regulations rule. You want no flag lots because you feel they add density. How many flag lots do you think there will be on land that is left that is buildable? I believe each lot should stand on its own. If someone can build a home on one acre and it perks correctly, then they should be able to do it. The septic system is the true restriction. If the home is too large or the extras they want on the property do not allow it to perk, then they need more land. Most of the remaining parcels in Milton are small acreage. The restrictions added by the city last year of increasing the lot width to 150 reduce the value of these small parcels. The restrictions already imposed by Milton and any additional restrictions further devalues the remaining properties. You are devaluing small properties of land significantly in Milton with all of your regulations. And you talked about variances. Just because you ask for a variance doesn't mean you're going to get it with the city. So you can't fall back on that. And you're telling us that I got my one acre, but y'all can't have yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please call the next speaker?
That concludes the public comments.
Thank you. So I'll close the public comment period. A question for Robin or Michael. So if the existing structure, so let's say you have a four-point, whatever acre piece of property, and during, on these new rules, it's 1.5 acres per each flag lot, can the existing structure, can that remain at one acre? Or does that have to comply with the 1.5 acres?
Right. So long as it's, let's say, the front first lot is not considered a flag lot, it's just a rectangular or multi-sided lot. So that would only have to have one acre. It's only the lots that have a flag pole to get to the main part that's considered a flag lot. So...
Okay.
Well, wait a second. Under that scenario that we discussed earlier, that, did you call it the original structure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That original structure, let's say it's in the middle of the property. So wouldn't have to go, it's on one acre, you could, how you described it earlier, it's still okay. It doesn't have to go to BRZ to get sort of exempted as a one acre lot.
So this, in this example here, so I guess I was just speaking of this front lot, that this would, this is not considered a flag lot. But let's say the existing structure was in the middle of the overall...
Right.
...property, then that would be considered, to get to it in a legal fashion, you would need to have one and a half acres. So you would just adjust everything. So you're looking at, you know, one and a half, one and a half, three. So that's, you'd need a minimum of four acres to get a lot yield of three lots, like, that would look like this.
Okay, so, but previously, some interested parties wanted there to be, in this scenario, the opportunity to have one, one acre lot for the sole purpose that perhaps there was an older couple, you know, with, with a home, but in order to meet the requirements on a small lot, on a small parcel, and would be able to be exempted, would be able to have that and then go to BRZ with that.
It really depends on where that, that existing house sits, like what I just said. I mean, if it sits in the front, then it can be an acre. But if it sits toward the back and you need a flag pole to get to it, then it would have to be one and a half acres according to what we're proposing.
And I understand that. And I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, but I think, I think the preface of this is, we're already putting, these are some pretty big restrictions. And for someone who's already lived here, who has that house, who wants to add on maybe to, you know, son or daughter that moves in to get that extra flag lot, I don't think we should make that existing structure all of a sudden a one and a half acre minimum. I think that existing structure should probably stay at one during the current standards.
Or you have to go to BRZ to, to get that opportunity.
They shouldn't have to do that.
I mean, unless you, I mean, right now, the text is not written in that way, but if that's what the council so desires, then we can figure out a way to...
They already own the property.
Can you just review for me just today, what is the rule on a flag lot? What's the, it's one acre, and how does the flag?
So just like what Michael has on here, a flag lot is required to have a minimum of 35 feet of frontage on the road.
And then 15 foot.
And then it can go down to 15 feet for the stem or the flag pole section. And then whatever's left is what you get out of that one acre. So, you know, I, Michael's done more research. I mean, typically, what is, constitutes one acre of the flag pole, I don't know, is it 10, 15% of the overall one acre? I don't know.
But currently, the, 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 the flag or the stem could be any length.
Correct. Now, that's correct, but we have to look at the fire marshal because with the fire marshal, they have certain regulations that has to be met. And I, so I don't want to quote it, but sometimes the stem is dictated by what is required by the fire marshal.
So, so today, the stem just can't go on forever. The fire marshal could dictate.
Well, they could, but what, what ends up happening if it's just three lots and you're 1,000 feet back, you're going to be paying a high premium for your homeowner's insurance because you're 1,000 feet away from a water source.
So there are restrictions currently that, that curtail people from going crazy with some of this?
No, there's some kind of crazy figure. We have flag lot, flags, poles going over lakes to get to the other side of a lake, but the access is through another way. So I mean, there's very bizarre kind of scenarios that have happened in the past.
Question on that, Robin. I, I think I know some of those parcels. I've been on them. But aren't those things that have been before we were even in the City of Milton? Are we, have we, as the, you know, people come forward and said, oh, I want to do this, I want to do this kind of crazy, like, like, I know we have a number of them on, along Bethany Road, and it works fine for the people that, I guess I'm trying to think back to what Lauren Holmes said, is septic, the septic portion is going to dictate whether or not, let's say I've got a three acre lot, and I've got one home in the front, and then I want to build potentially two in the back or subdivide. So I have to get the stem to get back there. But if it won't perk, and if you don't, limited on what the size you can actually build with impervious, impervious, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to rethink to say, why, why are we going with one and a half acres? What's the magic of one and a half acres? Because I know that would limit if we've got someone who has like a three acre or three and a half acre. We're kind of putting, at that point, we're making them do just two lots out of their house or one additional lot parcel if they have a house on the front.
The good Councilmember Moore's point, where do we come up with 1.5? I mean, give us some discussion on that.
Right. So I think a lot of where we landed came from the flag lot discussion meeting in February, where we had so many existing horse farm owners there that had large lots. And it was a great debate. It was like a two-hour discussion. And we had conversations with both sides. And I think what we found is, we landed on 1.5 acres was the minimum amount we could shrink it to that would meet CPAC's goal of lowering density throughout Milton. And we looked at it this way. If you have a horse farm that's six acres and they have three acres on each side, you can pack in three flag lots on each side. We wanted to get away from that. And we thought 1.5 is a middle ground solution, where we would help the density, not just from the, you call it view, but from the side view of an existing horse farm. We're protecting them as well.
But if you're the person that purchased that land, and so instead of buying stocks, you bought land for your retirement, now all of a sudden Milton's saying, no, you can't get three lots out of that, you can only get two. That's where my concern lies. And, and I'm also concerned about how many times with the size homes that are being built in Milton, will a one acre lot fly anyway by the time you build the right septic system and have it perk? I mean, I, I would imagine most of the time, we're, we're, we're past that anyway. My concern is, won't those things already, without us putting another layer of regulations on it, control a lot of what's done? The, the concern of the person in the middle that has six acres and there's two, three acres, I, I don't have an issue with that. Those people bought that land, should be able to do what they want with that land within reason. And within reason is a one acre lot, in my mind.
So, but the person in the middle, if they're looking at the sides of houses and it's pretty jammed up, to them, I mean, they don't have a voice here tonight. You know, unintended consequences are part of the job, and they don't have a voice here tonight. But anybody could end up in that scenario, and people with flag lots next to them, I only know two people, they're not happy about it. And I think other people wouldn't be happy. So, you know, I'm not, I'm, I mean, I'm a property rights person, but I just think that there are unintended consequences. So we're, we're obligated to think about the property rights of, of those who may be affected.
You mind if I jump in? Actually, to, to your point about property value, some people at the flag lot discussion meeting that had existing horse farms said, you're lowering my property value by putting flags right next to me. So there is a counter argument that I have a sub acre horse farm, you're allowing flags next to me, you're lowering my property value. So we heard both sides of it, but we really took a holistic approach and looked at it citywide rather than just one each individual property.
That's where I reside on this. I think Michael's done a great job of taking into consideration countless hours of input to this. It has brought forward a really terrific recommendation, contemplating all of those variables that had been discussed for ad nauseam in multiple meetings to get us to here. And for us to renegotiate tonight as, as a, you know, table of seven, although it's our right, we make the final decision to disregard some of those countless hours where community input has generated this outcome, I think we're doing the community a disservice by not supporting what's before us tonight in our recommendation.
So to go back to the original question, what is the demand? So you're not seeing a demand right now on these type of developments. Is that correct? Or am I, I just want to know, do we have a current problem?
Yeah, I mean, there's not a, it's not like we have a, you know, big line out the door wanting to subdivide into flag lots. I think to Councilmember Jacobus's point, what we're finding is that especially on public roads, we have a 20% lot coverage, meaning that the house footprint, the driveway, the swimming pool, the swimming pool deck, you know, all the other accoutrements that they want to have on their, on their lot exceeds 20%. And what's that, what that is doing is it's kind of expanding the size. Okay, yes, it's one acre, we're allowed, but really to fit everything we want, we need more acreage. And what we've seen in subdivisions, we see lots, right? See lots of variances for lot coverage when it's just one acre. And so I think that's why that's driving my previous comment about how we had minor plats created and then more recently wanting to come back and combine it either to two or one lot. But no, we don't really have a huge demand the last couple of years for flag lots.
And Michael, real quick, can you go back to the staff's recommendations? Because I, I'm, you know, definitely I'm in the middle. I hear both sides of this for sure. I mean, I, I do believe the existing structure, if you're a resident who's been, been here a while, I, I, I do believe their minimum should be one acre and any other substance, you know, extra lot should be 1.5. I don't think the whole true meaning, what we hear on these arguments, these flag lots, is allow me to stay here and let's build a place for my daughter or father or something. So I do, I don't believe the existing homeowners should be restricted on their property. And I think that should be a minimum. I do believe the stem for sure should count. I mean, as far as the buildable area, or what is it, should not count, whatever. It, it should count. It should be included. So I, I do agree with that.
For the existing homeowner.
Correct, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think their, their property should not be negatively impacted on this ordinance. So if they want to subdivide from their current residential structure, they should be able to meet the current AG1 standards, and then any additional flag lots can meet the new standards. Does that kind of make sense?
Right. So I'm just trying to think in my head what that would look like. Because a lot of times, these properties, the house will be kind of in the middle. They're not right up at the front. They're not necessarily way at the back. So if you allow that middle section to be a flag lot at one acre, and then you've got the front that's one acre, and then you really end up only having one lot to be one and a half acres. Because when you front with 150-foot wide frontage, that's one acre. And then you have the existing property owner with their structure is one acre. And then the last flag lot would be one and a half acres.
Correct.
So you're really looking at three and a half acres total, if it's in the middle.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think you're, you're talking about supporting the existing property owner, which I can subscribe to that. I think that might accommodate where Councilmember Jacobus is going as well. Carol C. is shaking her head. I think you not then impose the hardship on the original landowner, as long as the other remaining lots abide by the new proposed requirements. I think I can subscribe to that.
Any other council discussion or move along with this? I know this has been a couple of years in the making, so. And I, and I want to be careful, Ken, because, you know, that, that wording is going to work with everything. I mean, I don't want to mess anything up.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Any, no further council discussion. I'll open it for a motion.
All right, where is it?
Yeah, 23185, bottom of page four.
It's four.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve, Agenda Item Number 23-185.
You, are you want to add any additional?
Well, yeah.
So if you all...
Yeah, but I don't...
Make a motion.
So if, if you don't make any amendments, then it would be whatever's been presented.
Well, so let's make the amendment of...
The amendment would be that the owner of the property is permitted to have a one acre lot, no matter where that house is.
That's what I brought up at the very beginning of the discussion. But they would not need to go to BRZ. It would be...
It would be...
Right.
Right.
No matter where it is.
I mean, Councilmember Jar, you want to take a stab at it?
No, I think I, I got it from Councilmember Jacobus. And as long as Councilmember Cookerly adopts that language, I'm good with it.
No, no, that's what I wanted in the very beginning, but we were on a different track from the prior meeting.
Agreed.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Council, I say, I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 23-185 with the amendment that the original structure be exempted from a 1.5 acre lot requirement to a minimum of one acre.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Second.
That's it.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly, a second from Councilmember Moore to approve Agenda Item Number 23-185 with the suggested amendment. Any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Michael.
Michael, thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Okay. Will the city clerk please say on the next item?
Mayor, that next item is consideration of RZ 2305, a text amendment to amend Chapter 64 as it relates to retaining laws. First presentation was at the July 24th regular meeting, zoning agenda at the August 17th. zoning agenda at the August 7th meeting, and defer to tonight's meeting. Agenda item number 23186, our zoning manager, Ms. Robin McDonald.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to have a discussion on retaining laws. It's RZ 2305, a text amendment to amend 64 as it relates to retaining laws. Since the adoption of the retaining wall ordinance in 2016, staff has found minor issues with this ordinance that either need to be clarified or minor changes be made to strengthen it. In addition, staff wanted to give more specific regulations to wing walls. The proposed minor changes are, one, to create a definition for retaining walls, create a definition and standards for wing walls, clarifies how a wall's finish should be constructed without naming manufacturers or brand names, and requires the city architect's approval, to delete the requirement to bring all retaining walls to the design review board, which has the support of the DRB, and clarifies that walls above four feet in height requires engineered drawings. Staff has also amended the various locations of the text where retaining walls are mentioned to refer to Section 64-2403, retaining walls to provide consistency throughout the code. Additionally, staff has corrected the fencing requirements where necessary to be consistent with amendments approved by the council in February of 2022. So in regards to the new definition, we already had a definition that was in Section 64-2403, so we do not need to adopt what was proposed. In regards to a wing wall, it means a wall that extends from an exterior building wall and is structurally integrated into the design of the building to which it is attached. In regards to public participation, there was no one in attendance who had comments on this item on May 23rd. And at the planning commission on June 28th, they unanimously recommended approval of the text amendment as recommended by staff with some minor edits by the city attorney. In addition, the planning commission requested that this text amendment be reviewed by the design review board on July 11th. So typically, text amendments do not go before the DRB, and that's the purpose of their request. At that meeting, the DRB recommended that the proposed text amendment be approved as presented. At the mayor and city council meeting on August 7th, you all voted to defer this item to tonight to allow more time for staff to work with the development community regarding the text amendment. Staff met with five local builders and one site planning consultant on August 2nd to discuss the proposed text amendment to retaining walls and more specifically wing walls attached to buildings. The next slide illustrates the agreed upon language for the wing wall within this text amendment. A new proposed requirement allows for wing walls that are structurally integrated with a structure, typically a house, to begin at a maximum of 10 feet. So here you see the house that Tracy did this, so kudos to her for her illustration. And so you see this wall is at 10 feet maximum at the house. And for a maximum distance of 25 feet, so it can go a maximum of 25 feet, and to taper down at a four to one slope for no more than a distance of 25 feet. This will enable homes to provide a walkout terrace level for the lot. And also, any portion of wall located within the minimum yard setback must be a maximum six feet in height. So I'll have another illustration here, okay? What do you mean by that? Shall be located outside of the minimum yard. So basically, this greenish area, I guess gray, is the envelope for the house. And the wall can be coming down, but once it hits this side setback or the rear setback, it has to be six feet in height maximum. So that would create the situation that the local builders had requested to make sure that could happen.
Robin?
Yeah.
But it can't, but that's, it's six feet minimum or maximum, but it can't encroach into the 25 foot setback.
Correct, so you can't go into this whatever.
So the setback still retains...
This where it says C or B or D, yes, yeah.
Thanks.
Staff, we'll now walk you through the entire text amendment to show the changes being proposed since the published packet in July and August. So your packet did not contain any updated verbiage per the city attorney, so I just want to walk through, if you so choose to approve tonight's text amendment, what it would be changed to. So on page two of the draft, we have at the top to delete that definition of retaining wall because it already exists further into the text. We skip to page 21, under the actual retaining wall section. And let us go down to 2B, and it's a new section of wing walls. And wing walls are permitted up to 10 feet in exposed height, so that's an addition. And then number little two, a wing wall must be a minimum, that's not new, but I'll go ahead and read it, must be a maximum of four to one slope and not exceed 10 feet. So that should be changed from three to one to four to one. And to exclude not to exceed 10 feet in length. And then little three, any wing wall or a portion of a wing wall above six feet in height shall be located outside of the minimum yard of the applicable zoning district or transect zone. And then lastly, in four, at the, toward the bottom of the page, add modular block walls are prohibited.
Robin, before you go on, if you don't mind me clarifying something you said earlier. When you were, when you were using Tracy's drawing...
Yeah.
On the proposed minor changes, I think I heard you say that the 10 foot height wing wall can be no more than 25 feet tapered down at a four to one slope and for no more than a distance of 25 feet in that tapered down slope. So a maximum distance that a wing wall can, even in its declining height, can be, maximum distance can be 50 feet?
Well, I believe that that was my error. So it's just whatever the four to one slope is from that...
Right, I think you said it correctly. I just wanted to confirm it because you, it's defined here in the, in the describing the picture.
Right.
But it's not, that language does not exist where you were just suggesting that the changes are going to reside.
I don't think that it was, it is a maximum of 25 feet in length, and then you have to start going down at a four to one slope, and then you have to get down to six feet, no matter what that length is. And then you have to be six feet within the setback, so. I was incorrect about when I said it had, it had to be a maximum of 25 feet, which would make 50 feet maximum.
But the total wall could be 100 feet.
Yeah, what could the, what's the, what's the total maximum wall length? I know it would vary depending on what the height is as far as the four to one, but...
If you had a larger, larger lot, it could be as much as 100 feet, right?
But it's not, it's, that's where there's conflicting information here.
I'm sorry. It really depends on what the height of the wall ends up being. The wall could be a maximum of 10 feet, but the wall could be at seven feet. And then it's, it can stick, it can project 25 feet at seven feet, and then slope at a maximum of four to one. But they could slope it, you know, less if they wanted to, just not great.
But the length of that four to one slope, we don't have a limit on it.
Right.
Okay, but that's, I believe that's inconsistent with what you have here from your drawing to your language. Your, your drawing, I think, is wrong.
So I think it's just the description to the left, but the actual drawing is correct. Because there's no maximum. Yeah, so that's my oversight.
The 10, 10, 10 feet high, maximum 25 feet length for that section of wall.
Correct.
That's correct. As long as that section of wall is not encroaching into a side setback, or any setback.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
That's the limit, that's, can't go in, can't go further than that. So that's the limitation.
Yes, it's not the length that's the limitation, it's where the setback is, it's the limitation.
But then it can be six feet or lower within the setback.
I agree.
Yeah.
It'd be real long, yeah.
Yeah, so this, that was my mistake in the description to the left, but the...
In your correction though, Robin, I think I heard you just say something different too. Sorry, I don't hate to be...
No, I'm good.
I picked on it, but I want to make sure we get it right. So I get the 10 feet in height, maximum 25 feet, four to one ratio down from that, or whatever, to whatever length, as long as it doesn't encroach in the setback. But you just said if it was less than six feet, it could encroach into the setback.
The setback, so long as it's six feet or lower. So it can't encroach into the 25 foot or 50 foot setback if it's seven feet. It has to get that, that, that three to one, um, four to one slope down to six feet or lower if it's going to go into the setback.
Why are we allowing an encroachment into the setback?
Because we allow retaining walls and setbacks in general.
Currently, we allow retaining walls to encroach into a setback as long as they don't exceed six feet in height.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's four foot tall, it can go right to the property line?
Correct.
Okay.
If it's six feet tall, it can go right to the...
The property line, six foot one it cannot. It has to stop at the...
Exposed.
Exposed.
And that's our current code.
I didn't write this.
No, 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 you're good, no, yeah, I think the right is...
My planning commission day is right.
I'm sure it makes a whole hell of a difference if the builders like it.
Okay. Then to page 22, we have this new version of the exhibit that will be inserted. And then under 3A, we're adding toward the end of the sentence, terrace and wing wall shall be measured in the same manner. And then in B, walls within yard setbacks or retaining walls allowed up to the property line in side and rear yards, except as prohibited in Section 642403, 2B3 for wing wall. So that's the exception that if you're going to, retaining wall is allowed up to the property line in a side and rear yard, but it has to be, with the wing walls, it has to be six feet, which is basically clarifying that. And then in 3C, foundations...
Robin, before you go on though, can you help me with your fact that the terrace walls...
Terrace? So we're down to E now?
Where are you on, Paul?
Oh, on B.
The addition of wing to terrace, well, let's, okay, let's keep going. We'll come back, we'll come back to my question.
Yeah. Okay. So the next one would be C, foundations, no part of the retaining wall or wing wall foundation shall extend beyond the property line or into the rural view shed. D, fall protection, all retaining or wing walls four feet or greater in height shall be required to provide fall protection. And then under E, one, terracing. Minimum separation between terracing walls must match the heights, highest segment of the highest wall. So that was not a change, that had already been there. We were just clarifying what it meant by terracing. So that, that was on the original verbiage. But if you have a question about that, I'd be happy to answer it.
What I want to avoid is a recurrence of a wall that was being built that was not in code over at the manor. Where you suddenly have the, this great big wall, rather than a tree line, you're looking at 25 feet of wall. Are we still, are we making any changes to our code in this that would take away that restriction? Does that restriction still exist with these changes?
I mean, the highest it could be was 25 feet. I mean, I don't know what happened in that exact situation, but you're talking about along Providence and...
No, it was over on Hambi.
Hambi.
You saw it from Hambi, as you were going east. And it was a new construction in the manor.
Okay.
And they had this mega wall that, you know, because of our code, that was in violation of the code, it was creating a backyard that didn't exist. It was a property that was otherwise probably unbuildable to have a backyard, and they were creating a backyard. So it was too much house on too little lot. And it was going, they were going to fix their problem by building this unsightly wall. So if we are still, if we're still making sure that we don't, we have not made any changes to that, I'm good.
That's correct, I mean...
It's correct. So the code still is, you can have, you can have tiering, but only two, maximum of six foot each. And that's what the current code is. So that particular situation, we cited that individual.
And they took it down.
And they ended up taking it down because it was against code. So if they want, you can have two six foot walls, you could tier them. Then there is a distance, if it's six feet in height, you have to be at least six feet in width. That separation. And you'll see later, we, we do require screening and landscaping, and we do require any of the wing walls to be a brick or stone. So they can't be modular block.
Great.
So that, to protect those.
Perfect, thanks, boss.
And Councilwoman Morris, like a flashback to when we, I remember when we first talked about this.
Yeah.
12 years ago. Scary.
Okay, Bernadette pointed something out. And on page 21, and I apologize for this, delete B2 in its entirety so that, so everything will be like, so that's why it was a little confusing. So a wing wall must be a maximum of three to one slope and shall not exceed 10 feet in length. We're deleting that in its entirety.
Then the reference in the next section would be 2B2.
Then... Because 2B3 controls the length as opposed to 2B2.
But we still need the four to one slope.
Katie taking notes on that? All right, again, okay.
I got it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Glad you do.
So we were at the bottom of 22. That was just pointing out the terracing that was already there in the amendment. And then in page 23, allowing wing walls to be higher than six feet in height limitation, no single retaining wall shall exceed six feet in height at any point except as allowed in the section that was previously referred to, allowing it to be 25 feet. And then...
In height?
What's that?
Not...
Width?
Width, not height.
It's the height.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So because it's just saying no single retaining wall can be six feet, but that's not actually true. Wing walls can be up to 25 feet. So that's citing the exception to it. Yeah.
Thank you.
And then 4D, retaining and wing wall shall be landscaped to mitigate any adverse visual impacts, et cetera. So those were the changes. Let's see if there's anything else. Yep. So those were the changes from the original submittal on, in July and in August, so. Any questions or comments?
Can we go back to the first page?
Yeah.
No, next one. Thank you. So there was quite a bit of discussion about the four to one slope after, I think, 25 feet. If we strike B2, where are we picking that up? I know in the graphic, there was very clear 25 feet, then you got to do the four to one.
Yeah, I think in retrospect, it should be, we should have the requirement of a maximum four to one slope.
In your image.
And not to, well, but we don't have a, a length that's, so we just need that. A wing wall must be a maximum of four to one slope. Because we don't have a maximum that that portion should be.
Is it to the setback?
You can stop it there.
You can stop it there, because then doesn't, don't we have other language that prohibits the encroachment? No, it says you can encroach in the setback for a wing wall.
I think that's B.
So you just stop it at, so it'll be a maximum of four to one slope, period? And the rest of that can be struck?
Okay, here's what I thought. I thought it was, I thought it was 25 feet could be.
Six feet in height, 25 feet.
Well, up to 10, up to 10 feet for 25 feet.
All right.
And then it has to do the four to one, and then really, once it gets to four to one, then it's if you're above six feet, you cannot go past the setback. If you're less than six feet, you can.
Then you can.
You say a four to one slope to the setback, right?
Right.
Oh, you know what? Let's read my note. So in, uh, B1, um, I say wing walls are permitted up to 10 feet in exposed height for a maximum distance of 25 feet, and then sloping at a maximum of four to one slope to a maximum of six feet in height.
Beautiful.
There it is. I had it there the whole time. I'm sorry.
Just wrote it perfectly.
All right, can you, can you repeat that one more time for us?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the comment to the right on page 21, the first one, 2B1. Wing walls are permitted up to 10 feet in exposed height for a maximum distance of 25 feet, and then sloping at a maximum of a four to one slope to a maximum of six feet in height.
Okay.
Okay, so then, so there never was a wing wall 25 feet high?
No.
There never was, no. Didn't think so, because that's the size of that wall.
Robin, if you.
Well, it goes back to the days when we were trying to protect.
Your little three becomes little two on the next page.
Right, so it's still, but we're going back to deleting it because.
Yes, and now go to your next page.
Okay, go to the next page.
And your reference there, except, uh, prohibited in section of OBLASU, little B, little two.
Okay, so it'll be, be little two.
They're striking the old little two.
Robin, just to clarify what Robin, or what Carol was asking about, there could be no wall 25 feet high. And it goes back to the days when we were thinking about it as a new city, when there was a lot of demand, uh, development demand on steep slope, and we were making sure that deep slope that otherwise, because of its nature, couldn't be developed, was suddenly developable because of sizable retaining walls. So that's why some of these restrictions are here in the first place, is to ensure that the topography, the natural undevelopable land stayed that way without introducing artificial means, developed means to make additional lots developable that weren't otherwise because of the steep slope. Steep slope by definition is just that, and it's unbuildable. It guarded us as a city against development that would have otherwise been undesirable.
So I think we have to remember that this 25 foot height is only applicable when it's a structural attachment to a house. It is not a freestanding 25 foot wall to create a backyard for somebody.
Right.
Yeah, it could only be terrace, as, you know, like, the maximum would be, um, two six foot terrorist walls.
Right.
Just free, free floating. Yeah. Yeah.
We should keep saying 25 feet height. The maximum height of a wing wall, let's make sure it's clear, is 10 feet. If it's attached to the building, I'm sorry. Okay, just want to make sure I get it right. It's 10 feet maximum height for a distance of 25 feet horizontally, and then going to a four to one slope.
Yep.
And, and then you can continue with your six foot retaining.
There's no 25 foot height anywhere.
There's no 25 foot height anywhere.
Yeah, so it's 10 feet. No, you're, you're good.
I'm sorry.
Approaching, we're good.
But I'm just, I'm just saying that you can't just create a 10 foot retaining wall freestanding, and so that's what I meant by the 25 feet.
That's the part of there, just saying, make the text match, match the image, and we're.
Yes.
Make it so.
Do we need public comment?
We do.
Nice. All right.
Like those crazy people.
Support or against? Will we support or against?
Hard to say.
We'll find out.
There's just one.
Let's call the speaker, please.
I'd like to call Mr. Scott Reese.
Doing business at Brumlo Rees &amp; Associates.
Mayor and Councilman Scott Reese, Brumlo Rees &amp; Associates, doing business 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. I was the representative of the design development community, um, in the, um, negotiations for the compromise. Uh, I want to commend staff on, uh, working with the, uh, engineering and design community, uh, to come up with the compromise, and the, uh, local builders. Um, um, I'm sure you've noticed that now a walkout on the main level for a rear yard is the preferred building style. Um, trying to work a basement entrance in or a terrace level, if you're an architect, created the need for, um, the changes to the retaining wall ordinance. I'm going to try to clarify the drawing. I'm a little concerned about Scrivener's error in this negotiation of what was on the screen. So I'm hoping we're going to be careful about the text, or we're going to put in that the drawing supersedes the text. So, that being said, a wing wall is attached to the primary structure, or a other structure on the property. It is not freestanding. So a wing wall attached to a structure can be 10 feet in height, and it can carry that 10 feet of height for 25 feet on the horizontal. Once it reaches that maximum 25 feet of length, it can drop down at a four to one slope, which is a manageable slope for a person of senior years. So that was the design criteria to get away from a two to one or a three to one. We do not need design criteria that sends people falling down a slope. So we, we go out, 25 feet, a max 10 to six, four to one, four times four, 16 feet. There's the, I think, the number you were searching for, Mr. Moore. So, once we get to six feet, then we meet all the other ordinance criteria. Then it can be, uh, extend out for whatever, um, the client or the, uh, taxpaying citizen may need to create, uh, his buildable lot. Anything that's beyond the, uh, criteria that's existing of the six feet height has to be within the building envelope, meaning outside the setbacks, be they the 25 foot side in a rural, a, um, 60 foot front, 50 foot rear, depending upon if you're in a different zoning classification, those numbers will change. So, um, from an aesthetic standpoint, it, um, will have to be, or the, is it, brick or stone, um, and it, um, we'd originally, I think, said, match the water table of the existing structure. So that was, um, the, uh, consensus, um, from the meeting, and I really want to commend Bob and, um, Mr. Croco for, um, their, uh, attendance in that meeting, and, uh, I think this is a very good compromise, uh, for, um, both aesthetics and structural integrity. I just am a little bit concerned of, um, what I saw on the screen. So, uh, please proof it, because as we have all seen, it's very easy to pass these, it's tough to get them fixed if there's errors in them. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
That's all.
Okay, I'll close public comment. Any other questions or concerns? I might let the city attorney take a stab at this one.
Mr. Mayor, I would just hope, I would ask Robin if we could put the fir. The first page of the PowerPoint back on. So, uh, yeah, no, the, um, I said it wrong. Keep it right there, yes. So, Robin, if the council was to, to move, to approve these changes with the addition of your first two comments on the right, would that capture the text as you are comfortable with it? In other words, you, you, we would incorporate your, your change on 2BI and also incorporate your change on B2?
Uh, to deleting it entirely, yeah.
Okay.
I believe that matches the picture perfectly.
I think so too. So that, I think that's, Mr. Mayor, I think if there's an interest in a motion, it would be to approve as displayed, uh, except to include planning's first two comments, incorporate those on page 21 of the, uh, presentation.
Okay, that sounds like a great, um, opening motion, so. All right, let's take a stab at it. What, what, Bernadette?
Do we need to change the reference on page 22?
Under B.
Now, the pertinent content will be 2B2, that'd be 3.
Three.
Or does that cause a internal numbering?
Right, right, it's internal.
Yeah.
Can you go forward to that next page?
But that reference in 3B will now be 2B little 2. With the deletion of the old 2, 3 becomes 2.
Yeah, I think, I think if we do the motion that I mentioned, I think that staff, when they're finalizing this, can, can change that internal reference. It's a great point. I think we can do that.
What you said as displayed in the first two comments on page 21.
That's correct.
Those amendments, so, okay, those amendments, all right.
Okay, I'll open it for motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we pass number 23-181.
186. 186.
I'm sorry, 186. That's not a Scrivener's error, that's an rhetorical error. All right, as, uh, with the two amendments as displayed in the first two comments on page 21, all other pages corrected, same.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly, a second from Councilmember Moore to approve agenda item number 23-186 with the recommended changes. Good, all right. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please see on the next item?
Mayor, that next item is consideration of RZ 2302, a text amendment with respect to notification requirements for various types of land use permits and variance requests and other procedural updates to comply with latest amendment to Georgia State Zoning Procedure Law in Chapter 64, Zoning of the City of Milton Code, Agenda Item Number 23221. Robin McDonald.
Good evening. Um, tonight, uh, we are going to discuss the zoning procedures law, or better known as the ZPL. Um, it gives, the ZPL gives local governments authority to use zoning to manage development activities. It also contains the statutes governing zoning hearings, procedures, and conflicts of interest in zoning actions. During the 2022 Georgia Legislative Session, uh, the legislature adopted revisions to this ZPL. Um, the city will be required to enforce these updated requirements by July 1 of this year. The timeline has been delayed because of the Planning Commission not having a quorum in May of this year. Staff has been implementing the new changes proactively since July 1. The following boards and commissions will be impacted by these new changes, the mayor and city council, Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, and Design Review Board. Changes included in the proposed text amendment, one, uh, to increase the notice of the hearing, uh, to be published in a newspaper utilized by Milton as the legal organ, the Milton Herald, of 15 days minimum notice to 30 days, but not more than 45, prior to the public hearing. Number two, to notify the applicant by mail with the above requirement of 30 days, but not more than 45 days. Previously, this was not required. We figured the person applying for it would know it, but, um, the Georgia Legislature is, um, requiring us to give them the notice by mail. Um, thirdly, the community development director is authorized to accept service on behalf of the respondent and as a defendant opposite party. This was previously assigned to the chair of the applicable boards and commissions and the mayor of the city council. Um, the thought being that was explained by the city attorney was that it would make it easier for, um, any appeals to be served, um, to the full-time staff. Um, how does this impact the city's processes? The new requirements will lengthen the rezoning slash use permit text amendment process from three and a half to four months. The new requirements will not impact the primary variance process of six weeks. We already had it kind of baked in, um, for the Board of Zoning Appeals. The most impact is to the applications for demolition permits, approvals from the Design Review Board. Previously, the deadline for submittal was one week prior to the DRB meeting, date for demolitions and building final review. Now it is 42 days prior to the DRB meeting. After further review and consult with the city attorney, it has been determined that final building approvals do not apply, since they are only recommendations to the community development director and not a zoning decision. Based on that fact, the change in the text amendment that is shown below should be adopted tonight. So in this, uh, purply pink area, section 64-1022, um, was originally, um, added, uh, to the text amendment, and now we are asking this not to be included, um, so. And everything else would remain the same, um, with the proposed text amendments. What is the fiscal impact? I think this is the first time I've ever done this for a text amendment. Um, the required additional legal advertising will increase the line item for advertising from $9,250 in fiscal year 23 to $11,713 in the upcoming fiscal year 24 budget with an increase delta of $2,463.
That passed through, Robin?
I'm sorry.
Did that pass through? Do we, do we charge?
Yes, um, we double check that it's in there, yeah. Uh, public participation at the CZIM in April, um, there was one member of the public who made comments, suggestions on the proposed text amendment at the Planning Commission. On May 24th, there was not a meeting because of lack of quorum, and it was, um, voted on recommendation on July 26th. Mr. Paul Fricki from the city attorney's office presented the proposed text amendment to the commission with the change to name the community development director authorized to accept the service as on behalf of the respondent, if there's an appeal to Fulton County Superior Court instead of the chairs of the various boards and commissions and the mayor. This change has been reflected in a text amendment. There was no one in attendance from the public, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance with the proposed amendment presented by Mr. Fricki. And then what's before you, what I'm recommending is the same thing, except the elimination, um, of the DRB requirement for, uh, building a review. So I'm here to answer any questions of this exciting topic that we have tonight, so.
Any questions for Robin? Any public comment?
There are none.
Yep, all right. I'll close public comment and open it for motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve agenda item number 23-221.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jacobus, and a second from Councilmember Moore to approve agenda item number 23-221. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Will the city clerk please see on the next item?
Consideration of an RZ 2303, a text amendment with respect to the following alcohol-related uses of limited food service restaurant and limited tap establishment within Chapter 64, Zoning of the City of Milton Code, Agenda Item Number 23222. Ms. Robin McDonald.
I promise, this is the last one I have. Okay, uh, the proposed creation of these two use permits and definitions are a result of providing the opportunity for the owners of these uses to have the ability to move physical locations if necessary. These types of uses are only currently permitted within the Crab Apple Form-Based Code area. Please note that, that only establishments that were initially licensed on or before January 1, 2022 pursuant to Chapter 4, uh, alcohol of the city code of ordinances will be considered. Um, public participation, the CZIM, there was no one from the public, um, to have comments on this text amendment. Planning Commission, again, because of the lack of quorum, it was, uh, again heard or put on to the July 26th meeting. They recommended that after adding the use, quote unquote, "limited food service restaurant" under the Crab Apple Form-Based Code standards and tables, Table 9, specific function and use remain blank, and I'll have a, um, a picture of that in a minute, across all districts. By doing this, it would indicate that this use is not permitted in the city. The commission also requested that staff investigate when the last time the only previously approved limited food service restaurant paid excise taxes to the city, to determine if only approved limited food service. to determine if only approved limited food service restaurant, if the only approved one had ceased operations. The city's finance department indicates that the last time excise taxes were paid was in March of 2023. The commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed text amendment as presented with staff with the one change to leave the Table 9 for limited food service restaurant blank across all districts in the table. Staff notes that by eliminating it as an allowed use, the proposed use permit is not needed. The proposed text amendment reflects these changes as recommended by the Planning Commission. Just the proposed definitions that we were, have before you. These definitions sit in Article, I mean, in Chapter 4 of the Alcohol Code. Limited food service restaurant, any establishment that meets all of the requirements of a restaurant but does not meet the requirements of an eating establishment. A limited food service restaurant must derive at least 30% of its total annual gross food and beverage sales from the sale of prepared meals or food. And in regard to limited tap establishment, any establishment that does not sell food prepared on the premises and that provides a limited selection of craft beer on tap for consumption on premises only. An establishment with a limited tap license is limited to having five or fewer malt beverage taps. Establishments with a limited tap license must limit consumption for any individual to a maximum of 48 ounces within a calendar day and must obtain approval from the fire marshal and building official in accordance with applicable codes. So again, same thing, this was in Chapter 4, but was not defined in the zoning code. So this is the Table 9 to the Crab Apple Form-Based Code, and you can see limited food service that we're asking for in yellow to be deleted, the use permit, as well as the little 10 because it wouldn't apply anymore. And number 10, the subscript says, "No use permits will be considered unless the establishment was initially licensed on or before January 1, 2022 pursuant to Chapter 4, Article 3, Division 3 of the Milton Code of Ordinances." And then, under limited tap establishment, U is under T5, that was a Scrivener's error. It is reflected within the use permit for the limited tap establishment. So we're proposing to delete in its entirety the use permit for a limited food service restaurant, and then this is the proposed use permit for the limited tap establishment. This says that it's only allowed in Crab Apple, T4 Open, and T5. These are similar, the same requirements of some of the other alcohol-related use permits. No outdoor amplified music shall be allowed. No signage shall face residential uses. Delivery shall occur between 7:30 a.m. and 7:30 p.m. Days and hours of operation shall be pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Alcohol Code. May have five or fewer craft beer taps. Consumption is limited to 48 ounces for any individual within a calendar day. The establishment must obtain approval from the fire marshal and building official. Eight, limited tap establishment shall not sell or offer to sell any cannabidiol, I don't know how to say that, CBD vape products as described with the definition of vape shop in Section 64.1, or any prohibited substances as defined in Section 32114 of the Milton Code of Ordinances. B, any games of chance, including but not limited to those identified in OCGA 50-27-3. And lastly, coin-operated or amusement machines are prohibited. So that is the proposed use permit to be placed within the Crab Apple Form-Based Code, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Robin? Councilmember Moore?
I just have one, Robin, and it's not actually related to this change, just something that occurred to me, is we suggest that they may have five or fewer craft beer taps. Is there a reason that we define it as craft beer and not just beer? It goes back to the original alcohol code? So it is for the purposes of craft beer only, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for confirming. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment?
We do not.
Shocked you on that one.
Yes.
All right, I'll close public comment and we'll open it for a motion.
Mayor, before you do, could I just ask one question?
Yeah.
I apologize. Robin, going back to the language you had for the limited tap, not the, not this, the previous section where you're only eligible. Okay, yeah, there it is, number 10. No use permits be considered unless the establishment was initially licensed on or before January 1 pursuant to Chapter 4. I think, I think you'll also, you changed the language so that if the original ownership changed locations,
Okay.
that you, they would, they'd be able to, that's why this is going into Chapter 64, otherwise we wouldn't need it at all. We changed the language to include that notwithstanding this division or any other provision of the City Milton Code of Ordinances, establishment, establishments holding a non-standard consumption on premise license that was first issued on or before January 1, 2022, and that's both of these types of licenses, and have further had no changes to the ownership of the establishment will be permitted to apply for a new license for the sole purpose of relocating the establishment.
Okay.
I think we need that additional language in there. So this way, the only, the only remaining establishment, if they were to move again for some reason.
They could, they would have to get a use permit, yeah.
I agree with what Robin said and what the Planning Commission said. There is no need for the other permit that was being proposed. In fact, I'll be back before you with Chapter 4 edits in the future to eliminate that from alcohol as well.
All right, good catch. Can we, can we, are you?
We can add that, is your vision, Steve, that we would add that to the footnote 10, that language?
That's it.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, I'll open it for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve agenda item number 23-222 with the addition of Mr. Krokoff's comments under number 10.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jacobus and a second from Councilmember Moore to approve agenda item number 23-222 with the recommended changes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. There's no unfinished business items, so we'll move on to new business. Well, City Clerk, please see on the first item.
It's consideration of a resolution to condemn property rights needed for Morris Road Widening Project, Parcels 2 and 19, 0.045 acres of fee simple right-of-way, and 3,644.03 square feet of temporary construction easement for construction of slopes. The owner is Windward Development, Inc., Agenda item number 23242. Mr. Rob Del Ross.
Thanks, Tammy. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we are asking for authorization to work with the city's attorney's office to exercise eminent domain for Parcels 2 and 19 on the Morris Road project. The graphic you will see on the screen here shortly shows where we are talking about tonight. This is the southwest corner of the existing roundabout at Morrison Web. There is a gas station there along with a convenience store and several small businesses. We began negotiation on this property with the owner and his representation in February. We were unable to agree to financial terms and several conditions that they had asked for. Tonight, we are asking to move forward with the legal process and allow the project to move forward while we continue negotiation and hopefully avoid court. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Any public comment?
There are none.
Okay, close public comment and we'll open it for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion we approve agenda item number 23-242.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jacobus, a second from Councilmember Moore to approve agenda item number 23-242. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, well, City Clerk, please see on the next item.
The next item is consideration of a resolution of the City of Milton, Georgia, to set municipal voting precincts and municipal polling place locations for municipal elections. Agenda item number 23243. Mr. Stephen Krokoff.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have a map that should be coming up for you shortly. Thank you. According to OCGA 21-2-260B, the governing authority of each municipality shall determine and establish the number and boundaries of municipal voting precincts. Insofar as practicable, precincts shall be the same as those for state and county elections. In addition, according to OCGA 21-2-265, the governing authority of a municipality shall select and fix the polling place within each precinct. The resolution before you establishes three municipal precincts and a polling location within each one. To form the three municipal precincts, it is recommended that we assign the precincts already established by Fulton County to one of the three Milton precincts. Those are the Fulton County Precinct of ML01, A, B, and C, which was the Milton Library, be assigned to Milton Precinct 1, which will be Milton City Hall. Fulton County Precinct ML02A, which was Birmingham Falls Elementary School, be assigned to Milton Precinct 2, which will be the Milton City Park and Preserve. Fulton County Precinct ML02B, which was Birmingham Falls Elementary School, to Precinct 1, which is Milton City Hall. Fulton County Precincts ML03 and ML07A and B, which was Hopewell Baptist Church, be assigned to Precinct 2, Milton City Park and Preserve. Fulton County Precinct ML03A, which was Summit Hill Elementary School, to Milton Precinct 1, which is Milton City Hall. Fulton County Precinct ML04, which was Hopewell Middle School, to Milton Precinct 1, which is Milton City Hall. Fulton County Precinct ML05, which was Cogburn Woods Elementary School to Milton Precinct Number 3, which is the Milton Public Safety Complex. Fulton County Precinct ML06A, which was Manning Oaks Elementary School, to Milton Precinct 3, which will be the Milton Public Safety Complex. And finally, Fulton County Precinct ML06B, which was Cambridge High School, to Milton Precinct 3, which is the Milton Public Safety Complex. The map before you depicts the locations of each of those precincts, both the Fulton County in the, in the numbers, then in the colors, the Milton precincts, and each location is, for the polling location, is depicted on there as well. Available for any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Okay.
Just clarification, so this is just for Day of Election, polling locations, correct?
That's correct. This is for Election Day. Early voting will all occur right here in this building.
Great, thank you.
Any public comment?
There is, sir. I'd like to invite Matthew Wise to the podium, please.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the city council and the mayor. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Matt Wise. I'm the deputy general counsel for the Democratic Party of Georgia. We're, I'm here first and foremost because we're concerned about making sure that elections throughout the state are freely and fairly conducted. And obviously, this, the setting of poll precincts in the city has gotten some media attention. It's been on our radar. So I just wanted to have the opportunity to come and address the city council this evening. Obviously, this is a step in the right direction compared to the previous maps that were proposed. I think initially, there were two precincts, which was down from nine, I believe, when the county, the county administers elections. We shared concerns of various voting rights groups that raised issues about that being a substantial polling consolidation, concerns about not having a precinct in the southeastern portion of the city where I think they estimated between 30 and 50% of the residents were persons of color. So obviously, we appreciate that another precinct was created with the voting of the Milton Public Safety Complex being in the southeastern part of the city. But I'm still, I'm concerned, the concern is that there's still, I think, room for improvement with respect to early voting. Obviously, having it in only one location in the county, I think is less than ideal. It's in the front of the southernmost tip of the county. When you're looking at these types of polling closures or consolidations, you have to think about how it affects sort of the most vulnerable members of the community, people that may be elderly, may not have a car, maybe relying on mass transit. And so obviously, one early voting location that for nearly, most days is only going to be open 9 to 5, which is regular, you know, regular working hours. I believe it's only five of the 17 days will be open until, at 7 a.m., and the final three days will be open until 6. State law allows you to keep it open from 7 to 7. It doesn't require it, but it's within your discretion. Then, of course, there's no Sunday voting, which is, you know, inconvenient for people who may have religious observances on Saturday. So that's early voting. And then, as far as on Election Day, you know, condensing from nine to three precincts is still, you know, a pretty sharp reduction. Obviously, I'll look back, point back to the statute 212260B that says that as far as practicable, the city, the municipality, the precincts should be the same as for state and county elections. We don't necessarily feel that that, that's what's accomplished here. And then I'll, you know, of course, going back to the accessibility, you know, there's, with only three precincts, you know, where you're consolidating, and one precinct, one, has six different county precincts. Precinct 2 has four. Precinct 3 has three. So, and, you know, they could be as much as four or five miles away looking at the map. So that's obviously something that we're concerned about. I want to just mention, I did catch an error, I think, in the, in the resolution on paragraph 4. It looks like you, looks like they repeated Milton City Park and Preserve twice for precincts 2 and 3. I think precinct 3 should be the Public Safety Complex. So I just wanted to call that to your attention. And then, just the last thing I want to say is, obviously, you know, we're paying, you know, paying attention to these elections. We think that this municipal election is going to have outsized importance, not necessarily for who wins or loses, although I'm sure there's important issues at stake. But because I think other cities in Fulton County are looking at how Milton administers this election to consider how they're going to handle their elections in 2025 and 2027. So I think it's important to us and to the voters of Milton that everything is done, you know, in compliance with state, state election code regulations. So we want to work cooperatively with the city. You know, if you want to designate a contact, whether it's Mr. Krakoff or the city attorney, you know, we're happy to be in touch to the extent we have any concerns as they arise between now and Election Day. And certainly, if we're not able to reach an agreement, you know, we obviously reserve our right to raise issues with the secretary of state or the state election board, but hopefully it won't come to that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we, any other speakers?
That concludes public comments, sir.
Okay, a closed public comment. Yeah, sure, yeah. Councilmember Moore?
I'd just like to take a few minutes and revisit this for the purposes of understanding how we, how we got here. And it's been a protracted process, and it's, it's been under a great deal of scrutiny. And just go back and take, take more than a few minutes to understand how we got here and why we got there and why this has been so contentious. Think back to the very beginning when we, we looked at creating feasibility study done by the city. It was really, the instigation of that was because of the costs that were going to be forced upon us by Fulton County. As a city council, we took a responsible decision to determine whether or not, looking at process and at cost, whether it was a project that we could or should take on as a city to conduct our own municipal elections. After some deliberation, we created the, the committee, which has come under a great deal of scrutiny as to whether there were secret meetings or public meetings. And I think that has been answered, asked and answered several times. Hopefully, people have gotten to the comfort level that there were no secret meetings. They were always available for consideration by the, by the community. As to the aspersions cast on this council for our consideration of who should participate in that, it's quite remarkable to me that somebody hasn't stopped and taken a look at the facts that at the time at the facts that, at the time, we were a council in transition. We had had the recent election in November. This committee was created shortly thereafter. There were a number of seats being vacated or in transition, including a mayor-elect that couldn't participate. That left three council members to participate in this feasibility study. We were asking for two participants from the council, that left Councilmember Crockerly, Councilmember Morrig, and myself. We've been under a great deal of scrutiny since then for the fact that the three of us who are now, or who are subject to reelection, two of those folks have since gone on to declare their candidacy for the upcoming election. It's quite remarkable that nobody has stopped to take stock of the fact that we couldn't conduct the feasibility study without two of those members being from seated council members that were going to be up for election. The feasibility study was concluded long before any of the candidates declared their candidacy, and so any malfeasance or any accusations of malfeasance, if you read some articles out there, you would have some of us stuffing the ballot boxes already when they weren't even declared candidates. We completed the process, and it was concluded after great length and some superior work done by staff, by members of our community, and a couple of us from council, we concluded that, number one, the process could be done and that cost could be saved. And as such, we went forward with recommendations. The conclusion of the study presented the fact that we could conduct our municipal elections with a number of anticipated voters with a single voting location, and we felt that that was a more dramatic move than probably what could be absorbed by the community's eye for that, and we decided that we would subject ourselves to two and the associated costs with that. We determined that an east location and a west location were probably the most appropriate, and we identified City Hall, and we identified the Public Safety Complex. Immediately upon the delivering of that conclusion, it was brought to our attention by our city manager that he felt like the Public Safety Complex with those numbers was not a manageable conclusion. And I think what we did unfortunately that night in an effort to accommodate that legitimate suggestion was that we offered an alternative solution that night, which was the Milton City Park and Preserve. It was a decision that was made on the fly. Council was accused of some pretty egregious things, and the fact that we were going to be eliminating the availability of some of our community for their rights to vote, that it was racially driven decision, and I can promise you nothing could have been further from the truth. It was based on the fact that we had used that facility in the previous election successfully, and the decision that night in order to move the process forward, we ended up on those two. Well, thank goodness, under the suggestion of a number of members of the community and the press, and the consideration of our own council, we did the wise thing. We were asked to reconsider our number of voting locations, and we did the right thing. It was always the right thing, with we removed the one charge that had not been given to us originally was to add a third precinct devoid of measure of cost. So we made the decision that night to move to the second one, to be the Milton City Park and Preserve. It was under the initial charge of the committee, which was to drive cost out of the system and measure process. The addition of the third precinct, or the third voting location, again, is absolutely the right decision. I'm glad we made it. We made it as a council with 100% vote in support of that. Even having made the right decision to do that, we are still coming under tremendous scrutiny and a lot of accusations of disregard of the city's concerns for voters' rights, disregard for our lesser advantaged or community of color, and again, couldn't be further from the truth. So we continue to receive a lot of attacks. An angry blogger, our local paper that serves as our local organ, the AJC, one party or another. We know this is municipal elections. It's nonpartisan. There is no party affiliation with that. So we continue to get these attacks, but it's been unfortunate that we don't have an opportunity very often to correct the record. And we've been pretty quiet as a city in doing so. Well, it came to my attention recently that there was another attack on the city by an attorney. It's unclear to me who the attorney was representing, but a complaint was made to the State Election Board. And that claim or that charge included a number of allegations against the city that I think warrant clarification once and for all by the fact that the city has taken a position in response to all of those accusations. And as such, I'd like to ask your indulgence to take the time to read the city's response to those accusations, to have a chance for the first time, I think, to really clarify the record on the city's position on that. So I'll ask for your endurance as I read the response. This is the city's response to Mr. Attorney Sells to the State Election Board. This is regarding the City of Milton Municipal Election, the State Election Board. "The office and the undersigned represent the City of Milton, Milton or the city, where on receipt of Attorney Brian Sells' correspondence to the State Election Board suggesting that Milton has committed errors in its preparation for conducting the 2023 municipal election. While the City of Milton always appreciates citizens' input and feedback within the context of the 2023 election and asserted allegations advanced are meritless, please accept this letter as Milton's response to such allegations with the city's corresponding confirmation that it has and will continue to prepare for and undertake its municipal election in conformance with Georgia law. Milton was incorporated on December 1, 2006. Historically, the city has entered into an intergovernmental contract with Fulton County authorizing the Fulton County Board of Registrations and Elections to conduct Milton elections. In 2022, the city conducted a feasibility study to ascertain whether it might be cost-effective to administer municipal elections internally rather than contract those duties to Fulton County. The city ultimately determined to conduct its own municipal elections for the 2023 election cycle. All county, state, and federal elections pertinent to Milton residents will still be performed by Fulton County. Attorney Sells' correspondence suggesting errors or omissions on the part of Milton in preparing for the upcoming municipal election is respectfully inaccurate and predicated on incomplete information." The city will provide its response in "seriatum," which means like in chronological order, to the advanced allegations. Allegation number one, that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, rather than the City Council, possesses the sole authority to change the number and boundaries of precincts. Response to allegation one is not supported by law. OCGA 21-2-26, I'm sorry, 262D provides that in a county having a population of more than 250, such as Fulton County, the powers and duties conferred upon the superintendent in OCGA 21-2-261 and 21-2-261.1 shall be exercised and performed by the governing authority of the county. However, 26, I'm sorry, 261 and 261.1 identify different entities for making decisions regarding precincts. Those distinct entities are county superintendent or the governing authority of a municipality. Thus, OCGA 21-2-262D, I'm sorry, 26Ds declaration that the duties of the superintendent shall be performed by the county, assuming a population of over 250,000, has no application to precinct decisions by the governing authority of a municipality. Such a conclusion is mandated by basic statutory construction. The reference to superintendent in 262D modifies that same term in 261 and 261.1 as reflected by the arrows below OCGA 21-2.262D has no application to the precinct-based duties and functions of the governing authority of a municipality. I'm not going to read the fine print on that. I'll move on to the next part of the letter. The interpretation in this, we'll make this letter available for consideration by the community. Interpretation advanced by Attorney Sells would only be appropriate if language in red below was added to OCGA 21-2-262D. And this is D. "In any county having a population of more than 250,000 according to the United States' Decennial Census of 1970 or any such future census, the powers and duties conferred upon the superintendent or the governing authority of a municipality," that's what's in red, which is in contest, "by this code section and code sections 21-2-261 and 21-2-261.1 shall be exercised and performed by the governing authority of the county. No such language exists. As such stated succinctly, the first allegation leveled against Milton misses the mark." Allegation number two, that the map accompanying the precinct resolution does not identify the boundaries of precinct 1 and precinct 2 as required by OCGA 21-2-261A and B, thereby rendering it impossible to determine whether they conform to the boundary requirements of OCGA 21-2-261A. Response to allegation number two is incorrect and predicated on incomplete information. The City Council has yet to take final action, actually, we took that action this evening, on its 2023 precinct boundaries. The city is currently advertising a precinct boundary map containing three precincts, with final action to occur September 6 this evening. As to the Attorney Sells' concerns over precinct boundary requirements, we find this concern curious given that the city has not altered the exterior precinct boundaries set by Fulton County. Rather than disturb those previously set precinct boundaries, the city is merely proposing to consolidate adjoining precincts so as to suit the convenience of the electors and to promote the public interest. OCGA 21-2.261A, not surprisingly, the municipal elections with no corresponding county, state, or federal matters on the ballot have lower turnout and do not require the same level of staffing or locations to be successful. Once the municipal precincts are finalized, the city will make available online interactive map, an online interactive map on its webpage that allows a citizen to input their address to locate their assigned Milton precinct and polling location. A copy of the draft precinct map is attached as Exhibit A. Again, this map will be up for approval on Wednesday, September 6, and that's what we approve this evening. I'm reading all these because these are the accusations that we continue to receive as a city that where we have not followed the rules, and our city attorney's team has done a terrific job of assuring that every one of these rules is addressed. Finally, for the press to have a chance to get it right and not misinterpret what has been presented either in public comment by a various number of groups, I'll continue to read. Allegation number three, OCGA 21-2-262C requires the Fulton County Commission to give at least 30 days' notice of any changes in the number or boundaries of precincts by publishing the details in the legal organ of the county. Response, the code section cited by Attorney Sells is related to changes in precincts performed by the county superintendent. As explained in response to allegation one, for municipal elections, it is the municipal governing authority, not the superintendent, that is authorized to make changes to precincts. And even though not required, in an effort to transparency, the city advertised the adjusted precincts in the legal organ more than 30 days prior to the date of the final council action on same. Allegation number four, Attorney Sells' final allegation is that a city council member may be attempting to participate in the administration of his own election. Attorney Sells further alleges improper influence in the hiring of an election consultant. Response, the last accusation is unfounded. Georgia law contemplates that a municipal governing authority, city council, is required to make various decisions regarding the administration of municipal elections. Rick Morrig is a member of city council. As noted above, it is a city council, not the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, that is required and expected to make decisions on precinct boundaries. Yet the implicit suggestion in Attorney Sells' letter is that council members whose posts are up for election, like Councilmember Morrig, must recuse. This suggestion is not accurate. If it were the case that council members whose posts were on the ballot were disqualified from voting on precincts or other logistical issues, then during the 2025 city election cycle, a quorum of the council would be automatically disqualified. In 2025, the mayor and Milton posts, District 1 Post 1, District 2 Post 1, and District 3 Post 1 are up for election. So if four members of the council were automatically disqualified because the mayor and the corresponding district posts were on the ballot, then the city would be legally hamstrung and unable to take any action. This would conflict with OCGA 21-2-261 and be legally and practically untenable. As to the allegation regarding improper influence in the hiring of an election consultant, that is an unsupported allegation. While there are communications reflecting Morrig's repeated efforts at ensuring a particular candidate for an election consultant position was interviewed, I'm sorry, we did with the emphasis in the correct place, efforts at ensuring a particular candidate for an election consultant position was interviewed, Morrig had no power to retain a consultant. In fact, Milton had two election consultants, with both consultants serving pursuant to an independent contractor agreement approved by the full council. Moreover, Attorney Sells does not explain how an election consultant whose service and contract was approved by the full city council can imperil the legitimacy, accuracy, and transparency of Milton's election process. Milton's elections process has been heavily scrutinized with numerous citizens and local paper routinely reporting on all aspects of Milton's election effort. There is no merit to the suggestion that Milton's process has been compromised or anything other than front-facing, transparent, thoroughly vetted, and legally compliant. Let me read that again. "There is no merit to the suggestion that Milton's process has been compromised or anything other than front-facing, transparent, thoroughly vetted, and legally compliant." In conclusion, and respectfully, the city disagrees with the factual predicate and conclusions advanced in Attorney Sells' letter. The city is prepared to answer any questions the State Elections Board may have regarding the city's election effort, and would welcome questions or further inquiry. "Should the State Elections Board require further information on the upcoming municipal election and the steps Milton has undertaken to conduct the election, please reach out to our office. Sincerely, Gerardin Davis, LLP, submitted by Karen Pashuta," as the attorney writing the letter. Thank you for your endurance for me to have a chance to put this into the record. It's unfortunate that Milton's efforts, which have been above board from the very beginning, have taken on such incredible scrutiny, where our effort is to do nothing but represent the best interests of our community. The attacks by bloggers, political PACs, private individuals, and the parties, the Democrat and Republican Parties, is simply uncalled for. I applaud the efforts made by this council, and certainly the committee, which has made gallant efforts to ensure that we have followed every letter of the law. As such, I submit that for consideration this evening. I will offer this letter to the city clerk for consideration if anybody in the community is so desiring to take a look at the letter. Thank you for your endurance.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. Any other council discussion? Okay, hearing none. Did I call public comment? I don't know if I did or not. I did, okay, close it. Open it for a motion.
Mayor, with respect to a motion, we do need to...
Is there an error?
Brokoff may want to make a clarification as part of the motion.
All the addresses are correct, and in the opening, it's all correct, but there is a Scrivener's error on number four, which states the location of the polling place for precinct 3 is Milton City Park and Preserve, 13690 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. That should say the Public Safety Complex. Let me get the exact language. The Milton Public Safety Building, located at that same address.
That simply needs to be baked into the motion.
Okay, well, I'll open it for a motion and let somebody have at it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 23-243 with the corrections offered by the city manager for consideration.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 23-243 from Councilmember Moore, second for Councilman Moore to include this recommended changes by the city attorney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, that's unanimous. Move on to Mayor and Council reports. I don't have anything to report on. Council have anything? Okay, so we will have a motion to adjourn into the executive session to discuss personnel and acquisition and potential litigation to have a motion... and potential litigation. To have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Uh, that was Moore and Morrigue. Uh, motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.